Good evening and welcome to the July 27, 2021 Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education meeting. Would you all please silence your cell phones and rise for the pledge?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have several public comments. We'll start with the public comments that are in person and then I think we have several more via email. So we'll start with Jennifer Sykes.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jen Sykes. I coach field hockey here at Gilderlin. I'm also a physical education teacher at Pine Bush and this year I was at the middle school as well. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of support of a turf field being included in the capital project. I'll be brief. I wrote a letter and I thought just maybe hearing from me in person would be a little bit helpful too. So I came to Gilderlin in the year of 2017. In the year 2016, I was at a different suburban council school. I coached field hockey there at the modified level. And I remember very specifically, one day I was at a modified field hockey practice and I kept seeing a score on the turf field where the school district where I was coaching. And it was 1-0, 2-0. It was a field hockey game. And it got to 15-0 and I thought, wow, that's like losing in football 200 to 0. And somebody turns to me and says, "Coach, it's only halftime." And the unfortunate thing was it was Gilderlin that was at the negative end of that 0. They had 0 and at the time the score I was teaching at had 15. It was halftime and then they ultimately lost 22 to 0 on a turf field, which is basically like losing 300 to 0 in the sport of football. It's kind of a score I never heard in 25 years of coaching the sport. And I thought, I saw those kids leave the field and I thought, they look really dejected. I mean, that's humiliating. And ironically, come the spring of 2017, I see that there's an open phys ed position at Gilderlin and they need a field hockey coach. And I said, "I have the skill set to do that." And I reached out to Mr. Johnson and we had a good conversation. And lucky for me, I was hired here at Gilderlin and I've loved my time here. And those girls that were on that loss were freshmen at the time. And then I was able to coach them in 10th grade, the same team that they lost to 22 to 0 when we started at a little turf time, because our sport should be played on turf. Grass is very unsafe for field hockey for many reasons. We lost in the semifinals to that team 2 to 0 that year. Come their 11th grade year, we go to almost full-time turf. We take that team 2-1 in semifinals, overtime, we lose. And then their senior year, a little Cinderella moment, a very proud moment for me as a coach. We rattled off 10 wins to finish the season. We moved full-time to AFROMs. We fundraised like crazy and said, "We want to be here. It's safer. I want these girls to have an opportunity to feel success." And we won the Section 2 title, proud winner of that in 2019, 2-1 in overtime. Same team that that group had lost to as freshmen, 22 to 0. And then we cruised through the regionals, semifinal game, and ultimately losing to the state championship team Maine End Well. As my girls say, "Maine didn't end well," but that's okay. So I just want to really show my support for turf. I was a physical education teacher at that district at the high school level and we used that turf from September through almost the holiday break. And it extended our outdoor units significantly. It was so much safer. In 2019, when we had to play our semifinal game on grass at Bethlehem, I lost two players to sprained ankles who didn't really recover completely for the final, the championship game. Luckily, we still won. But it's hard to see our kids have to raise money and battle to be almost on an equal playing field. But we still have to travel in order to play on a surface that every other suburban team just about plays on now in Section 2. And I also would love for our girls to be here at home so their friends can come in a non-COVID year. Their families, it's easier to get to the games and support us and really have a sense of pride in our facilities here at Gilderlin versus having to spend up to $16,000 a year to go and rent and AFROMs just so we can play on the surface that our sport's designed to be played on. And then a final thing for me is I'm big into getting kids into sports and providing opportunities where they can play and experience a sport for free. And we had that in Girls in Sports Day in 2019. We had over 150 girls that came to the high school and we had every sports coach here and we ran them through 20 minutes of each sport and they got to experience the sport. And to this day, a lot of my Pine Bush students say it was their most favorite day. Coach, this is my most favorite day of my life, minus my birthdays, my most favorite day. So I would like to be able to organize more of those events. And I know we can do that if we have a field that doesn't get rained out, that is under lights, that we can just really showcase for the community and get the community here to support our athletes. So I'm in support. I have a lot of people in my corner. I've been talking to the community. We have a lot of support for this to happen. So I would really appreciate that our Board of Ed considers putting it on our capital project. I moved to Gilderlin primarily to be closer to work and in a great community, but secondary, so I could vote yes for this project. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Phil Sykes.
My name is Phil Sykes. I'm the field hockey coach over at University of Albany and the husband of, hopefully, Jennifer Sykes over here. I wanted to come and speak tonight on our project and share a similar story with how we got to Albany and kind of going through similar kind of traits. And I started at University of Albany in 2004. We didn't have a field then. We were very new Division 1. We had to go to Union to run a field sometimes, get a run a field. We were sort of at liberty of whenever they had availability of practice. And so sometimes it was early morning, sometimes late at night and we're sort of scattered all over the place. Two years later, you know, we began to move forward, but it's a state university, so you never know what's actually going to happen. Fun little tidbit with our time at Union is we had a van load of about five recruits and they're all, you know, they're seeing harder, Schenectady colorful part. And some people were stealing some cup caps and we had to tell them to pretty soon look out there. They were like, "Man, this is so discouraging to have maybe coming to University of Albany." So once the traveling and all that time and energy and organizing ended, you know, we got to sort of establish ourselves at the university. We had kind of our whole practice time, normal game times, total game times. You know, the kids were a little rested, kind of balanced in our lives. And I think when I came home, I was a little less grumpy too with all that travel. So and looking and hearing about life situation and not rearing here and kind of athletic director here at Gilderlin, I watched and listened to a lot of these. You know, my sort of thoughts on it are, you know, great for the community in so many different ways, but I think that kind of balance of life and a little more time in our schedule was created for all those teachers, all those coaches, all these administrators who are sort of bouncing around, trying to juggle game times and rainouts and all these different things. So, you know, I know my experience in Albany when I started, I don't want to make this myself, but it was kind of a nice thing. We started off, we were the top five Division 1 field hockey programs in the country and not a desirable location to get to. We get a field, recruiting improves, our results improve. Seven years later, we make the funnel board, we have a team in the country. And I think kind of we know how to deal with it, kind of balancing around and have that support. University, I don't know if those things are possible. So I thank you for your time and I hope good things happen.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Goldman.
Hey, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jennifer Goldman. I'm a resident taxpayer in Gilderlin. I have three boys enrolled in the school district. My oldest son Alex is about to enter 7th grade and start participating in modified sports. I'm also the vice president of the Gilderlin lacrosse organization. I'd like to start by reading a letter on behalf of Mike Canali. He's unable to make it tonight. Soccer is our sister program at DiCaprio Park, so we'd like to help each other out. Says, "Dear members of the school board, the following is a letter in support of the district's plan for building a turf athletic field at Gilderlin High School. For the past 18 years, I've been the varsity boys soccer coach here at Gilderlin. Throughout these many seasons, I have seen the transition of many facilities that we play on shift from natural grass surface to synthetic turf. These changes has created a disadvantage for our players as the game is quite different when played on these new surfaces. As we enter sectionals each season, we have tried to deal with this situation by renting tournament AFROMs facilities, Union College, Schenectady High School, or Mahanis in the high school. During this, there are financial scheduling and transportation issues that we must overcome. As more and more schools build these types of facilities, the disadvantage is only growing. Although our parents are unbelievably supportive in helping us overcome these hurdles, it is a situation that is going to get worse as many of our neighboring schools are upgrading their athletic facilities so they remain competitive. Your support of this plan will allow many of our sports to practice outside earlier than we currently can do due to weather conditions and create a safer environment for our student athletes as well. As someone who works with hundreds of youth in both our school and local community, I can say that this project has tremendous support from our families and I hope that you will see the value of this initiative. Thank you, Mike Canali, varsity boys soccer coach, social studies teacher, Gilderlin resident." I would also just like to say, as a taxpayer in Gilderlin, the fact that our parents have to work so hard to subsidize turf time at other facilities, at other private facilities outside of the town of Gilderlin, as well as in other school districts, it's very frustrating and it's disappointing and honestly, it's embarrassing. You know, Gilderlin is a great school district with a vast array of resources and I just think that we can do better for our kids just so they have the same competitive advantage in athletics that our kids can have extended time outside in PE class and just generally contribute to their well-being and their physical health. So thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Katie DePiero.
Hello, I'm Katie DePiero. I'm a post-education teacher at Pine Bush and I'm also a parent of two children in the district. I have a son who's entering 9th grade and a daughter who's entering 6th grade, who plays both girls across at field hockey. Both, she plays her daughter. We're very lucky to be a part of her program. And in my role here at the district, in both roles, I am on many committees. And one of the committees that I am on is the playground committee. And when we worked with a lot of support from the district for the playground committees, we really identified that the district prioritized that students needed to be active and outside for their physical and emotional health. And so part of what we did with that was there was an investment in the rubber mulch, the rubber mat. And we did everything we could so that we could extend the season that we had access to our playgrounds. But that applies also for our high school students. We are not providing that same opportunity for them at high school level by not having a turf field. We've limited the amount of time that they're able to use it outdoors for PE classes and also for athletics. So we've identified that that's a priority for our younger students. I feel it also should carry out through all grades and really look at what access we have to those fields greater time over the year by having a turf field. And in addition, when I sit in and listen to the board meetings, I know last meeting, we talked about how the girls golf team does not have a coach, the boys do. And we hear of the disadvantage that our field hockey players are having by missing home games, by not having to practice in parking lots when they can't use the field, by playing on grass, by having to raise so much money. We're really not supporting our female athletes in the same way that we are our other teams. So I mean, I'm asking of support for the turf from the district and also, you know, for academics so that our PE classes have access to it also. So I'm hoping that it will be included in the capital project. And the good news is, I don't believe we can charge access to our playgrounds, but the turf would be a revenue source for our booster clubs. That would be the difference is we could host events there and different in sectionals and in BOA. If, you know, if it would be different, we could get some of that money raised for our booster clubs instead of asking them to come up with money just so we have safe fields to play on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Snyder.
So I wasn't really sure what to expect from this because it just, to me, seems like kind of a no-brainer that turf field is advantageous, has so many different advantages. I'm a parent of three. Two of mine have gone through the high school system already. And I've got a third one that is going to be a sophomore year. She plays field hockey and lacrosse. And my son, who's older, he played lacrosse. We often had to go over to Mahanis and use their turf field. Again, I do think it's an image thing. It's like, why can't we use this because it's going everywhere else? It's only gotten even more so now that my daughter is playing field hockey and lacrosse. Those are two sports that really, they're at a competitive disadvantage right now without the turf. Not only for now, but for the future. My daughter has aspirations of playing at college and, you know, all the colleges have turf fields. And both of those sports, the game is so much faster. When you look at lacrosse, I mean, round balls is the big thing and you've got to get every round ball. Well, ground balls on turf versus grass are just completely different. You've got all these girls practicing on turf. They're getting extra advantages. And then field hockey as well, I think it's just kind of a no-brainer. The ball's on the ground all the time. It's just so much faster pace. And right now, my daughter's involved in a big corporate effort for both, somewhere in Boston, and we're looking for Sykes for ABK. So I don't have anything else prepared, but it just seems like such a no-brainer. I was, we were at a Lacrosse tournament this weekend. We got talked in about turf fields and most all the camps over there, probably other surrounding schools, they're talking about, you know, all had turf fields and whatever it's worth. We're willing to say, when the time comes and you do it, do it right. There is a suggestion that it's not going to get on the track field. It's almost like a Saratoga because otherwise if it's on the track field, the track has left and your turf field is useless. Now it's a maximum amount of time. Otherwise, thank you for your time and support.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Paul Bigness.
Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to let me speak. My name is Paul Bigness. I'm a resident of the town of Gilderlin for 10 years. I'm an active soldier, Mass Army United States Army. Today, I appear as the president of the Gilderlin Lacrosse, which has over 200 girls and boys that play each year from grades K through 6. And as a parent for my daughters that play Gilderlin girls field hockey, which has over 175 girls from grades 3 through 12. I'm a father of two daughters. I have a 5th grade daughter and a 7th grade daughter. They both play field hockey and lacrosse. I'm appearing in order to ask consideration for Gilderlin Track and Turf Proposal of '21 to be revoked and added to the budget for the Capitol project. The reason why is because our fields, problems with our fields. There's Gilderlin teams that are practicing in parking lots, which fields are unplayable. Gilderlin teams are losing home games and result unplayable fields conditions. Gilderlin teams are spending a lot of money renting turf time at other locations. The Boys Lacrosse is spending roughly $2,000 a year to hold practice at Mahanis and High School in the month of March. Field hockey spends between $16,000 a year to play at Athens. This is less money for our teams to spend on athletics, camps, gears, equipment, etc. We are a competitive disadvantage for not having a turf. The majority of section semifinals and championship games are played on turf surfaces. Gilderlin is forced to adapt by other more accommodated because they have turf fields. It is a faster game on turf. The ball bounce differently on turf. 10 out of 15 suburban council schools will have turf fields in the next 12 months. Here's the schools that already have turf fields. Shaker, Columbia, Saratoga, Burn Hills, Shen, they have two, Troy, Schenectady, Albany. Schools that'll have turf fields in the next 12 months, CBA, Niskiyouna. Schools that do not have turf fields, Boston Spa, South Colony, Abel Park, Bethlehem, but they have it in their budget this year to devote a lot in ourselves. Who would benefit from this? Students and student athletes. With the turf, the high school phys education department will get a safer outdoor place where they can extend spending time outdoors. Student athletes in the following sports: Boys and Girls Soccer, Field Hockey, Football, Softball, Baseball, Boys and Girls Lacrosse, Boys and Girls Track and Field. Based on the roster size in the last two years, we estimate turf field would have a positive impact of roughly 794 athletes per year. Based on enrollment projections, we estimate that the turf field would have a positive impact of around 1,450 students enrolled in grades 9 through 12. The community, Gilderlin Sports, Future Dutchman, Future Lady Dutch, Talent Gilderlin Summer Camps, school events, Girls Sports Day, 5th Grade Friendship Games, etc. Ability to host events add a revenue to our athletic booster clubs, general community use. By passing the Gilderlin Track Proposal will fix all these problems. The space will have preset lines, no conflicts with our ground crews setting up fields and gaining competition, no overgrown grass, a safe place to play. I'm full supporter of this proposal and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to appear on behalf of 200 Gilderlin kids in our league. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Pam Walsh.
Good evening. I'm here tonight. My name is Pam Walsh. I'm a resident of Gilderlin. And I have two students at the Gilderlin High School. I have two boys. I have a 9th grader that plays soccer and lacrosse and I have a senior that plays soccer. So tonight, I just wanted to speak in favor of the turf field that's been proposed. We've already heard from a lot of great speakers and coaches tonight about all of the reasons why we need a turf field and how a turf field will benefit our athletes, our school, and our community. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to offer some additional context as to why I believe a turf field is also really important to our school's mission. It's part of the district's mission to inspire all students to be lifelong learners, able to achieve their highest potential. But in order for students to achieve their highest potential, we need to support them in diverse ways that our children learn and excel. So we offer our students AP courses to challenge those students that excel academically. But we don't just offer them AP courses and send them off to exams. We give them the resources they need to be successful in passing that exam at the end of the year. And we offer our students music programs and competition for those students to excel in the arts. But we don't just send them to NISMIA competitions. We give them the resources they need to be successful at the highest levels in those competitions. Athletics are no different. If we want our student athletes to be successful, to achieve their highest potential, we have to give them the resources they need to be successful. And in order to be successful in games where we compete against schools on turf fields and in competitions that are held on turf fields, our athletes need to train on turf fields. And you've heard that from all of the coaches and trainers that have spoken this way. I really hope that you will consider supporting the investment in the turf field and giving our student athletes every opportunity to reach their highest potential. Thank you for your time, Kim.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have David King.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Really do appreciate it. My name is David King. I'm here on behalf of my wife, Kim King, who cannot make it tonight. She got called into work. This is my son, Henry King. He's going to make a few comments. Henry has four sisters who are all playing field hockey. As a matter of fact, they're playing it right now. And his oldest sister, Chelsea, is looking, she's 16. She's getting ready to go to college and she's going to look at playing field hockey in college. So thank you very much again.
Good evening. Good evening. I speak for the whole King House when I ask you to please, please add a turf field to the Capitol project. We have five student athletes in our house. It is hard to get everyone everywhere they are supposed to be for practices and games. When schedules get changed because fields are unplayable, it throws a big wrench in our carefully planned out day. It also means that another day down the road will be overloaded. Coaches and schools also have to juggle already full schedules. There would be less cancellations with a turf field because they do not get flooded out like grass fields. Everything runs smoother when you stick to a schedule. Not everyone has the same flexibility with rides or schedules. Turf fields are safer to play on because there's no uneven surfaces. Maintenance crews don't have to mow or line turf fields because it's already done. Most schools already have turf. Games are completely different on turf. They are faster. How can we keep up with the competition if they get to practice at a faster pace than us? We just can't. Most schools, we all practice hard and make the best friends and learn so much from each other. Help us win. The field hockey team works hard to pay to play at AFROMs turf, but they miss out on the community and pride of playing on their true home field. Please don't make other teams have to pay to play somewhere else on turf to stay competitive. At this point, it's really becoming a need, not a fancy one. In a big family, we know the difference. Please give us kids the best home field advantage of our own turf.
Okay, next, we have Devin McLean.
Hello. So my name is Devin and I'm a senior at Gilderlin High School and I play varsity football. So I'm speaking on behalf of most of the football players and the future football players. I've been playing varsity football for the past three years. I play safety and receiver. And for the past two seasons, we made it to the Super Bowl and the past season, we won the championship. We have one thing that slows us down almost every year and that's figuring out where to practice. This school year, we practiced in the spring and it made the game feel very wet. Our first home game, we had to play at Schenectady High School. And during the season, making the commute all the way to Schenectady High School just to play or just to practice on the turf field costs a lot of gas money and not everybody in high school can drive. in high school can drop. So making the commute all the way to Schenectady, we wouldn't get home until around nine o'clock, but we still had schoolwork to do. So that made my grades drop a little. And I feel like adding a turf field to the budget, we could make the students get home a little earlier. We could get them, get their grades up and just have a better schedule. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Mitchell McKissick. Apologize if I said it wrong.
My name is Mitchell McKissick. I'm an upcoming senior and youth sport athlete here at Gildan. I've been playing varsity football and varsity basketball since my sophomore year, and varsity lacrosse since I was a freshman. And since I began playing athletics here at GHS, I've heard things about possibly playing on a turf field my junior or senior year. Obviously, that's not there for me, but that won't make my opinion change. One reason I think Gildan definitely needs a turf field is it will benefit every student athlete, modified freshman, JV, and varsity. All those sports that you heard earlier, Boys, Girls Lacrosse, Field Hockey, Football, Softball, Baseball, Boys, and Girls Track and Field. That's almost 800 student athletes that'd be given a much safer place to play compared to all of our fields where we have constant issues of flooding, snow in field, holes, bumps, all over the place. The turf would benefit also the students that don't participate in school sports through physical education. PE classes, spend way more time outside, which would have been a huge help this past year during COVID gym classes because we were stuck in the gym, we're stuck in our little squares, masks on, but we could get outside, we could space out more, masks off and feel more free like a normal class. Especially here in New York, we'll have, like during the winter, we'll have a day of snow, and then the next day, seventy-five degrees and sunny again, but we're stuck inside because all the fields are covered in snow. Turf, just plod that right off and back outside. A turf field could also benefit the whole community in general. It's going to provide the best field for Gildan youth sports. It would give our future Dutchman and Lady Dutch the opportunity to compete on a field that eventually, when they get up to our age, they're going to compete for a section two championship bump. Field could also be used to host summer camps, such as the Junior Dutchman Football Camp that we're running this week over at Knott Road. If we had one day, like today, it rained in the morning, we have nowhere to run that camp. Those kids are losing out on a day of having fun and learning about the game, and then those parents are losing out on a day of money they paid. And then, as you heard earlier, ten out of fifteen schools in the suburban council will have turf within the next year. That's ten opponents with a competitive advantage over us. Every time we travel to play on the turf, there's a number of disadvantages we have to face. This includes the different way lacrosse balls and kicked footballs will bounce on the turf, the changed timing of our football plays since we're moving at a quicker speed on our route running, and the majority of sectional games are played on turf fields. Few examples of those are three of our sophomore years. We played in the Super Bowl, we played at Troy against Shen. And then last year, our junior year, we played against Shaker at Shaker for football in the Super Bowl. And then in the spring, two seasons, we played against Shaker again at Amsterdam. And those are all three games against teams who play on turf every day at turf facilities. So their use of those conditions give them the advantage. More games, practices, we no longer need to be canceled or moved inside due to the weather we have. All summer long, our football receiving sessions and throwing have had to get canceled and moved into the gym. And we usually have to start every lacrosse season. In a normal year, we start out in a parking lot, which isn't doing us any good. Lines would already be all set on the fields, which would make it easier on our grounds crew, and we would no longer need to run other fields like Mahonson High School or Athens, which combines for about $16,000 between field hockey and Boys Lacrosse alone. Those are all reasons why I feel a turf field is needed and will benefit all of Gildan. I truly hope one day I can come back, watch my former teammates and my little sister play on the field I never got to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Marcus McLean.
Marcus McLean, and I'm a senior here at Gildan, and I play football. Last year, our team practiced at Schenectady for the beginning of the year for about two months, and that is a lot of gas. And getting home at nine o'clock on Monday with, after a full day of school, that's not very fun. Being, and this eventually led to spring, full spring practices on the turf field. I had competitors who were going to other places for us to, just for us to get better. And those schools, they don't have to go anywhere. Our season opener against Bethlehem, we played that at Schenectady. It was supposed to be a home game, but we're not home, we're at Schenectady because the field's unplayable because of the conditions on the side. Also, a turf field at Gildan is important at a time like this when you can't play on grass. Like today, we can't, it's hard to go outside. If you have a turf field, you go outside right away. There's no problems. Every sport that plays on the turf knows the difference. You can feel the difference. You know it. The ball goes faster, you move faster, everything's different. In football, after a day of rain during practice, and you're running and slipping in the mud and you're twisting ankles, it's not a good day. You don't want to be out there, not fun slipping around, not being able to get your foot and not running anywhere. Having to move drills back and forth because of sections of the grass on the practice field that are too muddy, unable to be walked on, we're slipping everywhere, we can't catch, can't get our foot in anywhere. Even though I will not be able to play on this field, I believe that Gildan Athletics and the Gildan program and the future athletes of the program would greatly benefit from this turf. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a few more public comments that were sent in, and so I'll read them. The first one is from Keegan Shaw. And she writes, "As a current resident and alumni of Class of Two Thousand Gildan, I am all for the new turf field at the high school." The next public comment is from Annie Maycock. Says, "Dear District Office Team and Board of Education, this is just a short note to offer my support for the turf field project for reasons that don't appear in a brochure. When the GHS auditorium was upgraded a few years ago with an extension on the front of the stage, a new light board, a new sound system, we were grateful for the upgrade. We'd been able to imagine what we could do with lots of new equipment and with just a little additional space. As it turned out, we didn't really know what to expect. An expanded, improved facility offers more than just what's on the spec sheet. It allows kids and advisors, or coaches in the case of the turf field, to move pieces around and try new things they could never do before. New spacing, new positioning, a whole new perspective on what's possible. In 3D space, we found ourselves stopping and starting and reconfiguring on the fly as we tinkered with the new upgrades. As the limitations fell away, we felt ourselves getting more creative. In short, we'd want a larger stage and a better gear, and better gear for a long time, but when we got it, it was a bigger boost than we had thought. I would imagine an improved athletic field will offer the same benefits to players and coaches, giving them the opportunity to fine tune their approach and, quote, "up their game" in ways that they'll only discover with the new ground under their feet. Thank you for your time, Annie Maycock, English teacher, theater director, and Gildan resident." The next public comment is from Dan Penna. It reads, "Dear Gildan Board of Education members, one of my favorite moments at GHS during this very turbulent year was on the very last day, as the seniors were permitted to roam the halls and visit with teachers and classmates one more time. They were ecstatic. One student stopped by my room, and after we reintroduced ourselves to each other, she had been fully remote throughout the semester. We chatted about the class, her senior year, and college aspirations. Then her eyes caught something in my classroom. She curiously pointed to a dual cassette stereo boombox that I had on the counter and asked what it was. Well, let me tell you," and the students got one more lesson that day they hadn't anticipated. "As I explained how we used to play music and make mixtapes back in the eighties, one of the students asked if I still used it. Though I refuse to give up my dozens of cassettes gathering dust in my attic, I don't use it. The boombox still functions, but it's inefficient, outdated, and compared to CDs and digital music, sounds terrible. So people don't use them anymore. You don't have to be a musician or music aficionado to appreciate the benefits of Spotify. The same can be said for a turf field. I have been coaching and playing on grass fields for over thirty-five years. However, like those cassette tapes, it is less functional, inefficient, and outdated. This is the reason that each spring season, many teams rent out turf fields, play in gyms, or even in parking lots just to get practices in, because the grass fields are unplayable. We experienced this during our fall to football season this past spring, spending the first third of the season at Schenectady High School borrowing their turf field. Even during our championship week, while the players lamented playing at Shaker once again, they said, quote, "At least we can play in a better field." The efficiency of a turf field can be experienced year round. No matter the weather, students and athletes and community members can use the surface safely and immediately. Excessive rains, such as the ones we experienced this summer, are becoming more and more commonplace. They can force teams to play elsewhere so they don't permanently damage the grass field. And when a grass field does dry out enough to use, it is still often too slippery and muddy to have efficient practice and can lead to pulled muscles and other injuries. Playing on someone's turf field is costly on several fronts. Teams spend thousands, spend tens of thousands of dollars to rent other facilities, money that could be used elsewhere for the student athletes, who also play, pay a price in terms of how limited their time for studies become. When you add in the time for travel, practicing at another facility can nearly double the time away from home that a normal practice at GHS would take. When I graduated high school in ninety-one, colleges and universities that had turf fields touted them as a way to recruit students and showed they were on the cutting edge. Fast forward thirty years, and having a turf facility is a given resource at every college and university, used by everyone from the football teams to the ultimate frisbee teams. The only major universities who retain a natural surface are those rich history and endless resources, like the Yale Bowl or Notre Dame Stadium, preserve its use. Now, even when you visit colleges and even high schools in other states, turf facilities are commonplace. Even ten out of our fifteen suburban council members will have turf fields within the next twelve months. Much like our classroom has evolved into using, to include Chromebooks, Google Classroom, and virtual meetings, our outdoor spaces need to evolve as well, especially after the year we have endured. Our students deserve it. A turf field will bring enthusiasm, efficiency, and function to our students and community as a whole. Thank you for your consideration and enjoy the remainder of your summer. Sincerely, Dan Penna, English teacher and head football coach, Gildan High School." The next public comment is from Chuck and Tracy Martone. "Dear Dr. Wiles and members of the Gildan Board of Education, we are writing in support of the proposed Capitol Project, and thank you for extending the timeline so further inquiries could be made as to what to include or exclude in the plan. We fully support the inclusion of a turf field into this project. After reviewing the plan, it seems clear that including the turf field into the Capitol Project aligns with the goals stated by the Facilities Committee. First, a turf field will improve learning opportunities for all students, not just student athletes. The turf field will create better opportunities for outdoor PE classes. Also, installing a turf field now while the track is being replaced aligns with improving our aging infrastructure. Most of the suburban council schools have or will have turf fields in the next year. The number of athletic programs in Gildan that could benefit from the installation of a turf field is long: field hockey, lacrosse, track and field, football, soccer, and others. Not only the high school teams would benefit from this improvement, but modified teams and youth programs throughout the town could see playing time on a turf field. It troubles us to learn that booster clubs are constantly raising money and spending thousands of dollars each year to have, just to have opportunities for their student athletes to practice and play on other turf fields in the area because our district fields are unplayable. This is bringing revenue to other public school district programs and private businesses in the area rather than spending it on our own Gildan students and our athletic programs. We now rejoin a long list of others who have come forth over the years to support the installation of a turf field at Gildan. Thank you again for considering this addition to the Capitol Project. Sincerely, Chuck and Tracy Martone." The next public comment is from Bridgette Kucia. "Good morning. In regards to the turf field proposal at Gildan High School, I would like to offer my full support and recommendation. Coming from a high school program in Syracuse, New York, we are behind the curve in having this opportunity for athletics. It will benefit not one but multiple sports programs and the community as a whole. In addition, it is seen as a safer option for athletes participating in weather conditions that can change at the drop of a hat living in upstate New York. Please consider my comment, send me an email, as I'm not able to attend tonight's meeting. As a positive push for approving another of many positive changes this Board of Ed has made and continues to look for ways to improve the community. Thank you for your consideration. Signed, sincerely, Bridgette Kucia." The next public comment is from Michael Jansen and Scott Ralston, oh, sorry, Sean Ralston. "Good evening, Board of Education. We're writing to you tonight in support of a turf field at GHS. As community members and more importantly, parents of student athletes, we wanted to share support for this beneficial proposal. Each of us currently hold seats on multiple youth boards within the Gildan community, most fittingly as current president and vice president of the Gildan Pop Warner Football and Cheer Programs, providing this opportunity to personally view the positive impacts of this endeavor, not only in our sports, our football and cheer, but the practice and play advantages for Boys and Girls Soccer, Field Hockey, Lacrosse, Soccer, Baseball, Boys and Girls Track and Field, among others. There are many opportunities that a synthetic field would present for the district, future Gildan student athletes, suburban council, and our community at large, improving summer camps, school events, revenue generating sectional events, and general community use, to name a few. Although unable to deliver these words in person tonight, please accept this brief note as acknowledgement of our support for the turf field proposal." The next public comment comes from Amy Lynch. "Dear members of the Gildan Board of Education, I am writing this letter to encourage the Board of Education as well as the community at large to back the Capitol Project that will be voted on in October. I was a member of the Facilities Committee that assisted the district in putting together, in putting a plan together for this Capitol Project. Those of us on the committee saw firsthand how much work Mr. Mooney and his team of advisors put into this project. At the forefront of all discussions during our meetings was the well-being of our students as well as the state of our infrastructure of our schools. The plan that has been submitted to the Board of Ed is a solid one that effectively addresses infrastructure issues as well as how we remove our students forward with technological upgrades. I encourage all community members to watch the Board of Ed meeting from July 1st, 2021, to hear all the details of the project and fully understand exactly what this project will do to help our students on so many levels for, in the years to come. One vital part of this project is an upgrade to our outdoor facilities, including playgrounds for our five elementary schools and a turf field at our high school. As our children return to school after this pandemic, their social, emotional well-being will be more than, will be more important than ever in the next few years as we help our students readjust and reacclimate to the traditional school model. Spaces outside the classroom will be so important for student success moving forward, allowing them to reconnect with classmates and alleviate their stress from the school day. Playgrounds provide the most effective environment for this at the elementary level. At the high school, a new turf field and track facility will provide the same environment for our high school students. Every season, athletes, athletes in our soccer, lacrosse, football, field hockey, softball, baseball, and track and field programs can now look forward to getting outside to practice time anytime the weather cooperates. Not only will the majority of our student athletes benefit, but students in the PE classes will now have an outdoor space they can access year round as well. PE teachers can engage their students through a variety of sports and outdoor activities from late fall through early spring when normally they are stuck inside. I am a mom to a rising senior in the varsity football and baseball teams. My son's mental health most definitely improved when he was finally able to play the sports he loves. His participation in these sports helped keep him focused on his academics and gave him something to look forward to as he knew he would be getting back to being part of a team. On the football side, our season would not have been possible if it weren't for Schenectady High School letting our team practice and play their first home game on their turf field. Our football team would never have been able to practice and play on the grass, their grass field in March. And this is what usually happens with baseball. They are forced to stay inside in gyms and alternative They are forced to stay inside in gyms and alternative facilities for the first month of the season, when a turf field could provide additional space each spring as the grass fields gradually recover. I hope that all Board of Ed members and voters can stand behind this project and see the good it can bring to all of our students at every level. These are investments in our community that I truly believe will be the things that all of our students will immensely benefit in the years to come. Thank you for taking the time to read this. Sincerely, Amy Lynch. And our last public comment is from Susan and Kai Wendt. Dear Gilderlin School Board, as parents of students in FMS and GHS this coming year, we have grave concerns about the return to school in the coming weeks and the surge of the COVID-nineteen Delta variant. Our numbers indicate that despite an almost seventy-seven percent vaccination rate in Albany County, COVID-nineteen numbers are back on the rise. This is largely due to the movement during the summer months with families vacationing out of state and traveling to states and cities with much lower vaccination rates than our own, and travel on public transportation in tight quarters. It is also due to the fact that the Delta variant carries a thousand times the viral load in infected persons compared to the original variants, which make it much more transmissible than earlier variants. The Del, oops, sorry. The Delta variant has proven to attack younger adults and children at much greater numbers than the original Alpha or Beta variants of last year. Proof of this can be found by looking to infection rates around the country and within New York State itself in recent months. There is a summer camp right here in Kopeck, New York, where over thirty children between the ages of seven and eleven were infected COVID-nineteen Delta variant in recent weeks, a group that is unable to be vaccinated. In comparison, the older vaccinated campers, aged twelve to eighteen, suffered no such outbreak. If that is any indication of what is to come when we put our children back into classrooms together in the fall, it is not a good one. Children under twelve are still not eligible for any COVID-nineteen vaccine. We feel that if we put our students and staff into classrooms altogether in the fall and also do away with masking, we will be facing similar or even worse COVID-nineteen issues compared to last year. There is no information available on the district website as to any definitive plans regarding masking or vaccine protocols for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. My children are both vaccinated, but my son has friends with fall birthdays who are not yet eligible. Therefore, we are hoping the district will strongly consider maintaining masking inside school buildings. We are also hoping that the district will require proof of vaccination for all staff and require unvaccinated staff to submit to weekly testing in addition to masking for the protection of everyone. Breakthrough infections among the vaccinated are all, are also on the rise, predominantly due to the exposure of unvaccinated population where the Delta variant is quickly taking a stronghold. If parents choose not to vaccinate their children against COVID-nineteen at present time, that is, of course, their choice. As the COVID vaccine has not been added to the mandated vaccine schedule for school-age children in New York State, we assume that the district will follow current CDC guidelines regarding the return to school, which currently state in part, quote, "Masks should be worn indoors by all individuals aged two and older who are not fully vaccinated. Consistent and correct mask use by people who are not vaccinated is especially important indoors and in crowded settings when physical distancing cannot be maintained." We also want to address this anti-bullying, anti-mask campaign that has been started by a small anti-vax group in our district. Number one, requiring people, including children, to partake in public health and safety measures to control and cease the spread of a global virus is not and does not constitute bullying of any sort. The word bullying has become a throwaway word that people use when they simply don't like the fact that they may be required to do something they consider inconvenient or uncomfortable. Every single country around the globe has been wrestling with COVID-nineteen. Those most successful in driving COVID-nineteen down are those where a larger portion of their population is vaccinated, wearing masks, and observing strict social distancing. Number two, there are already standard vaccine requirements in place in New York State for your child to attend school. These vaccines prevent real and dangerous epidemics like polio, measles, rubella, whooping cough, and others. COVID-nineteen is no different in the danger it represents to all ages in our community. Ignoring or eschewing public health mandates has never worked before during any previous deadly viral outbreak in the world's history. And according to leading scientists, epidemiologists, health experts, and medical professionals across the globe, it isn't working now. COVID is here to stay. It isn't going to just disappear. Hurt immunity isn't achieved with an extremely localized seventy-seven percent vaccination rate. It is achieved with only eighty percent or better global vaccination rate, such as with smallpox. Throughout the entire history of this country, there have been public health mandates put in place just for the safety and survival of the entire population. These times are no different, just the attitudes are. There's a reason why nobody has had a smallpox vaccine scar in the United States since nineteen seventy-two, and the United States has not had a single case of polio originate here since nineteen seventy-nine. The mandatory vaccines work. Let's continue to keep our kids safe and protected as we possibly can. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Susan and Kai Wendt. And are those the only public comments for tonight? Okay. Thank you. All right, so instead of having a discussion, I think, now about the turf field public comments, we'll go to the next part of our agenda, which is an update on the facilities proposal. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Wiles.
Good evening, everyone. It's really awesome to see so many people here in the LGI for a meeting, back to somewhat more of a normal kind of way of doing business. So we have an update really to the July one presentation to the Board of Education on our capital project. I'm going to be asking Mr. Cliff Mooney and Mr. Dave Austin to join me for parts of this presentation. And let me just outline some of the things that we're going to touch on. We want to start with some responses, questions that were brought to our attention at that presentation. So we'll start with those, and I think this will be what we're doing now. We do want to do an overview of the proposed new work that's part of this presentation. And there's really three categories of that work. There's the infrastructure improvements, there's our outdoor spaces, there's technology replacement and enhancements, so we'll talk a little bit about each of those three. We'll review the proposed project timeline. We'll talk about a summary of costs. I think Mr. Sanders is going to join us for that. And then we'll take questions and answers from the Board of Education. So there's only a handful of slides here. We want to be succinct, but we also want to make sure that we're addressing everybody's needs so they fully understand what we're working on. So having said that, the first question we get to do will be air conditioning. And Mr. Mooney, go ahead, give us yours.
Well, just, I guess I'll open it up because I know other people had questions in the past about AC. Anybody has follow-up questions? Okay.
Go ahead, Rebecca. Um, I'm wondering how many of the classrooms in FMS and GHS are in those rooms without AC?
Hundred percent of the classrooms on the second floor. And what, will the first floor be?
Cliff, of the rooms that have AC, of the rooms that don't have AC, do they have ventilation?
Yes, every room.
Every room has ventilation?
Yep.
So it's whole air, new air, it's always circular?
Yep. High school gets very confused and then we'll do the math.
Go ahead, Barb.
On the, the middle school, did we find out if we could use the federal funds outside this project that we're voting on tonight to do more on that first floor?
Yeah, we're not going to be voting.
We also, tonight, will get an update on our federal funding plans. So we'll spell out what we're doing with what's called the coronavirus funding, the CRISA funds. But we also have two point eight million dollars of American Rescue Plan funding that we have not allocated yet. And that funding could be used for capital construction work within certain categories. Air quality, outdoor spaces are among them. So that's kind of why we pushed a vote off to a little bit later to see if there's interest in using federal funds.
So we're not voting tonight on the turf field and the capital project, including the turf field?
No, that's August, August tenth.
So our hope tonight is that you tell us, keep going or stop. If the direction we get from the board is keep going, then we will put together the resolutions, the formal votes you need to make for us to authorize borrowing money, and we would put that together for...
I'm here no matter what. I just, I bet for our folks who may be awaiting the vote.
Formal vote will be on the tenth.
August tenth, yeah.
Is there any more math viewing before I go down this?
So Cliff, so just to clarify, you said that some of those window units will be moved to the first floor classrooms? So that'll increase that FMS number percentage? Okay.
Already set up, the windows are the same, so it's actually pretty easy.
So what do you think the percentage would be then?
Well, we have almost the entire second floor set up with window units now, so we keep pushing closer to a hundred.
Cliff, could you also go over the high school? There seem to be a lot of rooms there. Are we doing anything with the high school?
What exists now.
That just to keep the price down?
It's the same question then for the high school, is that percentage mostly classrooms or are they other spaces? There are classrooms like?
It's a balancing, it's a balance of a project. We could add lots of things, I guess. Um... What elements of the twenty-eighteen project are included in this project? I think I even said that in the last one that it probably confused people. The intent of this proposed project is to go back and look at the items that were cut. All those items that were cut are currently in this proposed capital project. That was under the line of the original referential column. Then we went back, there were some items that came up that I would call higher priorities. So we projected, plump it out, come up as an example, some new items that came up. Double water main break, back-to-back, on the West Drive at the high school after the Memorial Week End. Those items were highlighted and created. They're all in the proposed project. And then we had new items, the turf track field was included in this project. Our outdoor classroom spaces were included in this project, as well as our ten mile de security portion was included in this project. The other P-ones and P-twos are currently not. We probably confused it because that was never the intent to go take all that work and move it into this capital project. No different than what we're doing or potentially made do in our current project. I discussed taking, yeah, came in underbid, taking four boilers that we moved out, bringing them into this project. If this project goes out, we will, comes in on the bill. And then there's another component, the track component, that's there that would actually free up on this project. We could take and go look at additional P-one, P-two, and bring it into the project. I don't know if I just need to, or not.
Um, so if we, take out the turf field for a second. What's left, I just mean theoretically. What's left, what is the percentage of the capital project that is comprised of stuff that did not pass the first time?
We have a slide that shows right now, the three components that Dr. Wiles mentioned. You have probably rough math, voting.
How about percentage of it? So, who's good at math? Nathan, are you good at math? I ask you that everything.
My lawyer. No.
So we'll leave that second, eight million, six, two, five, seventy percent.
Right, so that's a big chunk. So, so my point is, if, if it didn't pass the first time, why are we thinking it's going to pass this time if we don't have the turf field? So I just want to put that out there.
Any other questions?
I just have...
So do you want to go through every page for answering Rebecca?
Sorry, I have more questions. Um, so I don't have your slides from last time in front of me. I have them on my phone and I want to go through it. But some of the P-one and P-two projects in the middle school and the high school were ventilation, HVAC, I think windows, and a lot of bathrooms. And I know there's some bathroom slides that are coming up, so I don't mean to like jump the gun here. But what would be the cost of those projects that were excluded from this proposal? So all the P-ones is about five million? Okay.
Cliff, our current project was developed from our twenty-sixteen building condition survey. We're due, we'll be doing our building condition survey again in twenty twenty-one. This year, taking into account the, the work we did. When we started this exercise, we were to work with the facilities community. We really went back, targeted items that we've seen, we've thought exchanged it. A lot tied around with pandemic, the HVAC and windows. And went back and looked based on age and vintage, targeting nineteen ninety-three vintage HVAC equipment. The stuff we're doing in this project is ninety-three or older. Will it need to be done eventually? Yes. Great, do it, sure, but it still comes down to a balance. Like I said, the intent was not to say we need to take all this work and do it in this current project. current project. And in this project, we really go back and capture the work that we cut from our twenty sixteen building condition survey, as well as the conversation on the field, our playgrounds background, the project.
My concern is, and I said this last time, so this is not like anything I didn't say before, but is that we are having this proposal that we just had a thought exchange and the, the, the most numbers in the thought exchange were infrastructure, including ventilation, student comfort like AC. And that's not being prioritized in this project, I don't think. I mean, it could be wrong. It could be...
Actually, a huge component in our current project, we're just shy, it's just shy seven million dollars in the current project, HVAC, like our entire second floor of our middle school is getting air conditioning in this project. And we're targeting, there's EV, we'll call unit ventilators, those are your pressure HVAC units in this building. We've got to be able to, so, so there is a huge component that we're doing. And even in this proposed project, we go back and we capture older units from Lincoln. So there are components in there. There's outside of the floor boilers that we may go back into our current project. There's four additional boilers that are in this project as well. So there are components in it.
Except at the end, the end result, if you go back to the last slide, is that forty percent of, or a little under forty percent of the high school won't have AC and a little more than forty percent of the middle school won't have AC. That's a, those are pretty big numbers.
Next summer, when we do this, you know, on the second floor, it's maybe the first floor, first one.
Cliff, I have, uh, one comment and two questions. The comment is, I'm being told that people at home can't hear you, so could you speak into the mic? And then second, um, about the water main break, because it seems like it happens a lot, so whatever money we're putting towards, are we just putting like Band-Aids on these? Because it feels like, I don't know, every couple of months we have like another water main break. I don't know, I don't know how often they're supposed to happen, so.
Probably not that frequent and in my time here, it goes in spurts. So like, well, it seems like we'll have a bad year, we may be quiet for a few years. This one at the high school was unique to have two back to back, and I talked about the installation of that line, that's the cause of that break. We had one in the front of the high school last year, we had one in front of the high school last year, same line. The town, that's the town's responsibility.
Mm-hmm.
So when you want to repair the line, it is a Band-Aid.
Mm-hmm.
Basically a fitting, it's a firm go fitting, we go on, we clean the bike, we put the fitting on it, and then have it to break and, and plan it back together. The reason, I talked with the town superintendent for the water sewer department, based on this installation, he recommends, well, that's going to be enough to block the problem out of course. Leasing infrastructure is a problem well beyond school districts. I mean, you see water main breaks in town, and sometimes it's every week, one town.
But it sounds like, um, like this installation, like you said, that it's a bad one? So is this something that's kind of on the list for, down the line for another capital project? It just seems like we're just going to be throwing money in fixing this?
In this project, it's a place in that higher section on the West Drive.
For the high school?
Yes.
Okay. And then the one other question I had was, um, someone brought up in the public comments about the, um, turf field, you know, being separate then from where the track is. But we talked, I think before, right, about having that fencing around the turf, so at least, um, I don't know, can you maybe explain that again so it can still be used?
Not for the infrastructure, the reason, originally when we started a few years ago, we did look at, we're going to put a turf field on, so we have no infrastructure, we don't have the drainage, we don't have lighting, we don't have that. So that cost of the turf field is going to go up tremendously. And a musco lighting system is one million, oh, point two million dollars a wall, similar to what's on our football field. So the decision was made for the infrastructure, you keep the cost down. We already have drainage in place, we have lighting in place, our bleachers are in place, our concession stand in place. If you get our turf field, it'd watch the work cost for installation. So it's not to say you can't do that. I know a neighboring district that's doing exactly that, and their installation cost is over five million.
I think you're right, Seema. I think that's where the, the netting idea came from.
Well, I think we talked about that before. I just wanted to clarify, because I know someone had mentioned it in a public comment, that, oh, that would be a nice idea, but yeah, the cost would be a lot more.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anywhere but where our football field is located.
Laura, you have a question?
I just want to pick up on something Rebecca pointed to. The, um, the district, the, the exchange we did, the thought exchange, could it be that, I know there were a lot, as Rebecca said, there were a number of comments regarding infrastructure. And your response was that, um, there are things that are being done now. So perhaps those comments, you know, are reflecting the state before, you know, and then after some things are going to be done. Uh, you know, it's hard to tell because that was a real concern by people, um, of are we meeting their needs? But you're saying that there are things that are happening now that will meet, you know, some of those conditions that they referred to.
That's something we worked with, uh, the patients, I think.
Yeah.
That's something I did with the facilities committee.
Right.
And I actually went back and reviewed our current project, it's in progress right now.
Right. Yeah. But the public who's doing the thought exchange, they don't have all that information, so we're not really sure.
I think that maybe that would be easier. The patients committee, you know, said, here's what we're doing in this project, here are the items that pulled out that were...
Yeah. Well, it's hard to know when you're just tapping into people's thoughts, it's what they're thinking.
I mean, I understand the thought exchange. Remember, the question in the thought exchange is what are we going to do with the federal funds?
Right.
It wasn't what do we need to do with the district?
Right.
So...
But they picked up on...
First of all, we can't even use the federal fund, you know, for the turf project, can't use federal funds.
Right.
So if you're asking people to answer, what are we going to do with these federal funds? It's, I mean, in the variety of responses we get, it wasn't just infrastructure.
Right.
You got maybe, you know, if you looked at the number of responses, you got six for infrastructure, six for turf, six, I mean, a lot of people commented on it. I mean, that's, I think the, the thought, thought exchange metrics are a little...
Well, I think it just kind of gives you an idea of where people's minds are at.
No, I agree, but again, the question was, what are we going to do with these federal funds?
Yup.
This came up on all gender restaurants, I believe, if I could read the discussion. Currently, right now, in the district, we have sixteen label, we will have a hundred and twenty one label, and some of these are single use, lockable bathrooms, restaurants in the district. So when you look at our elementary buildings, many of those are classroom bathrooms, that a lot of all gender sign. Some are, like, we have split now, we have all gender stamp, all name, and all gender for students. That's number increases significantly, all eight.
It's really great. Thank you for addressing that.
So this, um, next slide, the goal here was to try to, um, frame the, the nature of the work in a way that's maybe more comprehensible than P ones and P twos. So there's really, uh, three buckets of work. This is just an organization of the work that we're doing. So the, the first column there is all of our infrastructure work that was eliminated from the two thousand eighteen, um, project, which is about nine point four million dollars. And it includes storage, um, classroom storage and workspace cabinetry, picks up security cameras, HVAC equipment, including boilers, it's roofing and painting and locker replacement. Those are all things that were in that initial, uh, forty million dollar, um, project that was reduced to the three point nine. Then the middle category is really the work we want to do around our, uh, outdoor spaces. And there's three big categories there. Um, we heard a little bit tonight about our plans for playground upgrades, I'll say a little bit more about that. Um, we also have some, um, I think really exciting plans to think about, seven outdoor classroom pavilions. We'll say a little more about that tonight. And then, of course, we've heard, um, lots of commentary on our new track synthetic turf field. And then the last category we also talked about last week, our last time we were together, was around technology replacement and data security. Um, we talked about replacing aging projection systems. These are essential to teaching and learning, um, in our current, um, teaching and learning environment. And then we also talked about virtualization, which is a tool to help us keep our, our data safe. And then at the bottom, I just want to pull out, um, point out some newly identified infrastructure needs. I think we've just talked about a number of these. Um, but these were things that were not in the original project, but since two thousand eighteen have emerged as things that we do need to, um, think about. When we're planning our communications with the community, we're thinking about using these three big buckets of work that we would like to do to help people understand what we're hoping to do. And then the, the why of this project, we really, this is about students. We want to improve the learning environments with our students. It touches on the infrastructure portions of our work. Um, we want to provide for them the tools they need to engage in a modern teaching and learning environment that gets at our technology interests. And then we want to expand opportunities, and that really brings us to our outdoor work. So a couple of things to think about, um, our playground upgrades. Remember, these were all in that two thousand and eighteen proposal, but were removed. Um, we would like to do some work in each of our five buildings. And as I point out here, the needs vary from building to building. Um, but here are the big priorities. We want to replace the wooden structures that we have, our elementary principals can tell you the nightmares of eastings and splinters and aging, um, equipment that can't be replaced and so on. Um, we want to make sure there are age appropriate pieces of equipment in all of our buildings. We're not in, on equal footing there across our five buildings. And then we always want to expand our opportunities for students with disabilities to engage with their peers on our playground equipment. So those are all high priorities, um, in the proposals that we're thinking about. And then the other piece, and this is really a new idea that actually came from one of our elementary school teachers, but it has gained a lot of interest as we think about how we used our space this past year. Uh, our courtyards, for example, in this building were filled with kids unless they were filled with snow. Um, we really took advantage of our outdoor spaces in ways I've never seen, honestly, walking through the halls of, of Gildeland High School. So we have this idea to, um, put outdoor classroom pavilions in all seven of our buildings with the idea that they will provide additional learning spaces. We are cramped for space as we're trying to spread children out, um, for lots of reasons, but most recently around, um, the pandemic. Um, we talk about air quality, you know, everyone is, um, encouraging people to spend more time outside where air quality theory is much better. Um, being outside, as we all know, is a boost for social emotional well-being. We all feel better when we have an opportunity to go outside, and our students love to do that. This would create a, a organized space with technology and seating that would allow them to engage in learning. Um, there's also an option for community use. Our, our community members on the weekends could actually use them like they use our gyms and our fields. Um, and this is a one-time cost, so it fits within that category of, um, federal funds. It actually clicks a lot of the boxes for what federal funding wants us to do. And some of those bullets are right there around air quality, social emotional well-being, opportunities for students to learn. And it's a lasting benefit to our students and our community. So we're really excited about this component of, um, the outdoor space, um, part of our program here. I'm going to turn things over to Dave Austin to say a couple of words about, um, our turf and track. And I'm going to say, I thought some of you may have seen the presentation ahead of time, like bullet point by bullet point, right on target. So Dave, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you. I get the privilege to talk to a pretty popular subject tonight, I guess. So, um, just the first couple of slides are, is more of a recap of, uh, what is included in the scope of our proposed project in terms of, uh, the track and turf field. Um, as Cliff mentioned earlier, uh, we are looking to, um, to do the synthetic turf field in the same location that our current, um, grass football field is in. Uh, and infrastructure's there, lighting is there, bathrooms are there, bleachers are there. Uh, we're not looking to move this turf field anywhere but inside the track where the current field is. And also just, uh, just to recap of the proposed project, um, we would replace our existing eight lane track and replace our football grass field with a synthetic turf field. Uh, this includes drainage, power. Um, Seema, I know you asked a little earlier about the protective netting around the, um, synthetic turf field. That is included in the scope of this project. I know there was a concern mentioned, uh, earlier, um, you know, we went on our site visit to Shaker, and that was kind of one of the things that they'd said that they wished they had done differently if they had a chance to do it again, um, is extend the protective netting out even further, um, to about the ten, fifteen, twenty yard line on the football field. So we have prioritized that in this project. That is included in the scope of this work. Could you have a lacrosse game going while you have a track meet going? Probably not. There's a lot of tra- uh, traffic in the infield area at a track meet, uh, but could you have a lacrosse game going, um, while the track practice is going? Absolutely. Could you have a lacrosse game going when a, uh, track practice is going? Absolutely. Um, so that is included, um, in the scope of this work. Um, and in regards to the track, uh, we've also discussed possibly moving some of, um, the locations of our field events. I know the steeplechase, uh, rebuilding of the steeplechase is included in this project. Power at the finish line, so some of those items that were prioritized by our track community is included, um, in the scope of this project. Just really quickly, just to go through the synthetic turf basics, uh, the general construction of an art- artificial turf field is shown on this slide. Uh, we start with a rough grade of the field area. We install stone sub base material and drainage per our plans. Um, we install a layer of smaller stone to, uh, final grade below the turf carpet. Um, this is an option, but there's a, an option to install a shock pad. Shock pads should last through about two field cycles. Um, and then we install the artificial turf carpet and the infill material, which generally consists of sand, um, and synthetic rubber layers of varying thickness. Um, so that's the synthetic turf basics. Um, we are looking at, confirmed this with, uh, Mike and Brian, we're looking at a twelve year warranty, so I apologize it's incorrect on this, but I believe it's correct on the PowerPoint that we shared with you. Generally, the warranties on the turf fields are twelve to fifteen years depending on, um, infill material that is used on the track, um, on the synthetic turf field project. So we're looking at a twelve year warranty as a solid number. Um, but, um, from all the information that we gather, uh, synthetic turf field lasts about fifteen years with proper maintenance. And everything that is needed, I know that was one of the questions earlier, I can't remember if it was in the subcommittee or in the previous board meeting, uh, everything that we need to properly maintain a synthetic turf field is also included in the scope of this work. Um, so we feel really good about that number of, you know, fifteen years, uh, shelf life for the turf field. And then obviously, you know, at the end of that shelf life, there is a cost to replace the turf carpet, which would be somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand and nine hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, that includes the disposal, recycle of the old carpet, installation of a new carpet, and installation of new chrome rubber fill. Um, I do want to mention that SBR synthetic rubber, which is used in the fill, is not considered hazardous waste or regulated waste according to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. I know that was a concern when turf fields came into the conversation years ago. Uh, I just wanted to mention, um, that in this slide. And obviously, we've already spoken to, just added opportunities for revenue is another benefit, um, you know, for the synthetic turf field project hosting exceptional events such as soccer, football, lacrosse, and field hockey. That means fundraising opportunities for our booster clubs. Um, and also turf rentals to outside groups, uh, is, is on the table as well. And, um, in my previous district, we were doing plenty of that, um, and still getting plenty of time for our school, school teams to use that facility and our non-school teams, but our community groups, so our, kind of feeder teams, feeder programs, our future Dutchmen, um, would all benefit greatly from this project. And as, you know, obviously, we had, um, many come up and speak, um, to the rationale and the benefits of including, um, this project in this capital project. So some of it, you know, I, I'll try not to repeat, but, um, you know, I'm going to shift over to kind of who will benefit and the rationale behind this project. Certainly, you know, you've got the number of teams, you've heard it, um, here already, um, student athletes would benefit, um, in, in all the sports listed. Um, we looked, uh, looked at the roster sizes within the last couple of years, and we estimate, if you're looking at those athletes in those sports, we're at about eight hundred athletes per year. But I also want to dispel the myth, and I know some of our, um, members that came up and spoke tonight did a great job, that it's a myth. It's, it's not just going to benefit the athletes. We're, we're, we're really excited about the possibilities here, um, expanding our outdoor time for our physical education program at the high school, which, based on enrollment numbers, you're talking about fourteen hundred students that will be positively impacted by this, this, uh, project. talking about 1,400 students that will be positively impacted by this project being included in the capital project. So extended time outdoors, you know, based on my experience, you know, we're out there in November, sometimes December, and sometimes as early as February. So I know when we had our site visit to Shaker, that was one of the things that stood out to the athletic director of Shaker was that he literally said, "It's always in use." It's almost always in use, and that's one of the biggest benefits of this project is that we'll see the 1,400 students that will be positively impacted at our school. And, you know, last but not least, our community member. I think, I'm very confident, especially making our site visit, being in other school districts, a facility upgrade like this is going to turn this place into one of the main hubs in our community. I'm very confident that it will do that. We saw it at Shaker in the day that we visited. There were many community members out there using the surface and using track. I know it will be as well-received here at Gildeland, not to mention just the number of community groups that were already mentioned tonight that would directly benefit from this project. And last but not least, I will say it again, because one of my jobs is to advocate for our students and student athletes, and I think that's without question, our students and student athletes are at a disadvantage currently. And I think it's why our coaches, teachers, students, student athletes, and community members are here, and they're fired up about the potential of having this included in the capital project. As you've already heard tonight, 10 out of 15 schools in our league who are competitors already have, either already have synthetic turf field or will have it in the next year. And what a difference it is to have turf over grass. It's faster, the ball rolls differently. You know, just ask our field hockey program, for example. Prior to moving to Afrim's turf full-time, our field hockey program averaged 12 goals a season in 2013, 2014, 2015, and 2016. That's over about a 14-game schedule, averaging only 12 goals a season. After moving to Afrim's turf in 2019, we scored a school-record 49 goals in one season and won our first sectional championship in school history. So certainly, you know, it goes without saying that it's a much different ballgame. And we've already mentioned tonight, you know, there are many current sectional championships that are already played on turf field. Our Gildeland teams are very, very familiar with this. Our football team played the Super Bowl in 2019 on Troy's high school turf field. Gildeland Field Hockey played their sectional final on Glenn's Falls High School turf field. This year, we had our football team on Shaker's high school turf field for their sectional championship, and the boys' lacrosse team played at Amsterdam's turf field for the sectional championship. And that's just to name a few. Gildeland teams are losing home games as a result of unplayable field conditions. I've only been here a year, so, you know, Coach McConaughey and the boys' lacrosse program could give you a better idea of the number of practices that they've lost, the number of home games that they've lost. What I can tell you in my short one-year stint here is despite moving the spring season to later than normal, starting in early May, we got about a week, week and a half straight of rain. And that field, although it's one of the nicest grass fields I've seen, and certainly in our area, it doesn't bounce back very well when we get that kind of weather. So despite a late season, we still lost our first home game as a boys' lacrosse program. We shifted, we changed plans, and we went over to Burn Hills. So instead of our kids walking out of the school door and heading right out to a home game where they have advantages of playing on their own soil, we went over to Burn Hills and lost a very close game. So I know that's just in my short one-year experience, but from everything that everybody tells me, we're in the parking lots way too often, we're going to other facilities way too often, we're losing home games way too often. So, you know, I think, you know, as a result, I think, you know, 20 years ago, when turf fields entered the conversation, I think it was viewed as a luxury, because again, there weren't many around. But, you know, here we are in 2021, 10 out of 15 schools in our league already have them, for the reasons I've mentioned, for the reasons our community members have mentioned. I don't think it's a luxury. I think, you know, we're at a disadvantage. I think it's, we're at a point where it's our time, you know, for an upgrade like this. Our coaches deserve it, our kids deserve it, our community members deserve it. So thank you very much. I hope you support this included in the capital project.
Good evening. We wanted to talk about again, in terms of capital project, as was the cost of the taxpayer. We did provide some information at the July 1 meeting. That was information that we did internally within the district. But as we advanced the project, the board chose to advance the project back on July 1st, we now reached out to our professionals for assistance. We do have financial advisors available to us. So what we've done in the meantime is provided them information about the project and also allowed them to take a look at what would debt look like, what would debt schedule look like for 15 years, how much would we pay in principal, how much would we pay in interest, what that structure would look like, and we're able to apply that to the total cost of the project. The other factor that's changed since that time is, as was mentioned just previously, we're also paying about $770,000 in coronavirus federal funding. So that's lowering our borrower in costs as well. So with that new information, we're looking at a tax impact per thousand assessed value of 17 and a half cents. Annual tax impact for the estimated full value median assessed home of $299,000, that would be $52,000 per year to the annual tax impact. If we continue to go on with this process, which hopefully we will, we'll continue to refine this number as we go forward. So if we make changes, we'll continue to, we still have some options to look at in terms of the structure of the debt, we'll continue to look at those to try to maximize that core advantage. The footnote at the end still holds true with this scenario, so for every $500,000 in federal funds, so if we were able to apply some more, that median home tax impact would be lowered by approximately $1,000. So every $100,000, that $52,000 will be divided by 1,000. Timeline for our... Oh, okay. So in terms of our overall timeline for the project, we had the facilities, many recommendations that you mentioned tonight, the board met, and we used that on July 1st. We're here tonight on the 27th, looking at that project again. Could you review that, refine it, have a continued discussion? Plan now is going forward on August 10th. We would present bond resolutions to the board to approve. The item that we would need to put forward for the project. That were the case, we've already worked out a date for a capital project vote, that would be October 7th, so we've been in touch with Albany County Board of Elections. We've reserved machines for that date. We have to get ahead of their voting that occurs, early voting that occurs in October, October into November. So we have that date reserved, and those machines reserved. So again, if that passes, we would book our project passes, we would book for November through March, engaging our consultants on project design. And then April through July of 2022, we would need to have State Education Department review and approve those plans that were developed. We would begin bidding and award of contracts in August and September of 2022. And then finally, construction, we're targeting for October 2022 and running through August of 2024. Now, we're at the point of questions.
Neil, on that footnote about the $500,000, is the invoice true? Do we add $500,000, another dollar?
I just have a question about the technology piece. I remember last time we heard that it was Prometheus boards were the ones that were going to be, I guess, bought, right, for the technology piece in the capital project. Were staff and faculty surveyed about wanting that versus having a projector?
Yes. I think when Natalia Lemoy, our instructional technology specialist, was here, she had worked with our tech liaisons, who are representative of each of the buildings, to ask, you know, what works and where do we want to go next? So overwhelmingly, our teachers are very interested in those devices.
Okay, so was...
I asked that last time, and she said, "Everyone wants one."
Well, no, yeah, I heard that. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like a handful of, you know, people who were asked about it and maybe, because I know that they take up more space than projectors, so I just was wondering. And then the second, I know that we're not voting tonight, but if, I don't know who's in charge of communications committee, but if there's a date on the calendar yet or not, but that might be a good idea to do by the end of tonight.
I have asked that we do a poll and get a...
Okay.
I was the chairman last time.
Okay. I'm just concerned, like, my only concern is the communication piece of the whole capital project out to the community. Because we're in the bubble of paying attention and listening, and we still have questions. And so people who are going to vote, I don't want them to have questions after seeing what happened last time. So to have a date would be good. Go ahead, Rebecca.
I have a few questions, I'm sorry. The Prometheus boards that you were just mentioning, I think you had said last time that only 50% of classrooms would have them in the proposed budget?
At the end of the proposed, it would be 190 classrooms would have them.
Which is about...
About half.
Okay.
My second question, and this is sort of getting at what I was getting at before, I went back to the slides from last time. And at least in the high school and the middle school, there's a lot of P1 projects that are related to ventilation and HVAC. And it would be really curious, like, I would like to know the sum cost of those projects. You know, we've heard a lot tonight about how a turf field is in a luxury item, but I don't think a HVAC or bathroom upgrades are luxury items either. And that's like the sum number that I would like to see. And then my third, sort of unrelated question, has to do with the renovation or the tearing up of the turf field after the 12 to 15 years, like the renovation piece. Where would that funding come from? Would that require another capital project, or would that, how would that come about? That's quite a bit of money.
Yeah, that amount of money. That amount of money, it would have to be included in the capital project. Except for that we do now, I mean, we project it, be in the capital plan, I'll be retired. But yeah, we project it out, you know, be able to retire.
Cliff, on the ventilation just now, is ventilation stuff, I mean, that's about $4 million, rough number, AC, ventilation, P1, P2. I ran the rough math. You don't have to do it here. Go back, my same question I have about the middle school, do we have ventilation in those buildings? Is it just the AC that's being upgraded?
No, that, when you talk AC, the units that are going in are the heat, AC, and fresh air exchange. Every space has fresh air. That's probably the biggest difference between AC and a school building versus your home. Much ado, most houses do not exchange fresh air in your house. You're recycling and cooling the air. We don't do that in heating season nor cooling season. We are constantly changing. We exchange, on average, about four times per hour in any space in the school district with fresh air. Some are a little lower, some are a little higher.
Any other questions? Rebecca, we can do that math.
I just have a question about the federal funds. And can they be used for, I can't remember what the discussion was around the bathrooms and what else needed to be done. If everything was included in here, or were there things that still needed to be done regarding bathrooms, like any upgrades?
Around federal funds?
Yeah, like, can we use that for, I know that there's a big range that we can use them for.
You know, I'm not sure about bathrooms under the federal funds, because a lot of the federal funds for, around coronavirus, were around air quality.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to, I mean, so I think that would be a question that we'd need to do some homework on.
Okay.
Cliff, I mean, one thing we talked about in the committee level about bathrooms, because I know it's come up a bunch, and what you explained to us, and we haven't, I haven't heard it at the larger boards, the amount of updates you're constantly doing to bathrooms, and kind of where the, kind of the issues of the bathrooms stemmed from, some infrastructure issues a couple of years ago?
We initially updated, like faucets, sink repairs, toilets. We typically don't get into the tile work and infrastructure work behind the wall. One of the things that we had a very bad infrastructure here in this building with our sewer system, very bad. And I think everybody focuses in on that, that we had continual issues with drainage in this building. We actually went through, jetted all the lines, flushed the entire building out. Also, it was the first year that the state mandated that we provide feminine hygiene products in the building as well. There were some issues around that. In the current project, we're actually lining the worst sections of the sewer pipe in the building. When you get in infrastructure in the building, it's underneath the building. So it's not like your home where you dig up to the foundation, you kind of just poke a hole through the wall. No, it's underneath our hallways, it's underneath our courtyards, it's everywhere. So we're actually lining. When we did all that work, we did part of it. We did not have the issues in this building. Our bathrooms are older, they're dated, they function.
Yeah, I just, I wanted people to hear that, because I think there's some misconceptions about quality of that.
So there was definitely a good year in the facility, well, after that.
I have a question for Mr. Austin, is that okay? Just, some of the students were saying that they had to drive to Schenectady. Do we not have buses for that? Or were they choosing to drive?
That was one of the adjustments that we had to make with the fall 2 season, that was this year, the football fall 2 season happened. I want to say it was the second week of March, it pretty much ran through April. So the weather during that time wasn't great. Schenectady plowed their turf, so, I mean, we couldn't have been on our grass field even if there wasn't any snow on. You know, so we got turf time late because there were other schools using the turf time. I think we were there 6:30 to 8:30, I want to say, 6:30 to 9:00 maybe. So we kind of just engaged the players, and because of the timeframe and number of student drivers and number of student athletes that were able to get rides at that time, we didn't have to, we didn't have to provide busing, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Gotcha, thank you. And I'm not criticizing it, I know you worked very hard to piece everything together, and we appreciate it. I just, that stuck out to me. I was not aware that the kids were driving to the opponent's fields, using their fields, and then getting home at 9 o'clock. And these are young, new drivers, so that makes me nervous.
So if there are no more questions, is that it? Dr. Wise, okay. We'll take like a two-minute break. If people want to stay for the rest of the meeting, they're welcome, there's the rest of the agenda, so we'll take two minutes if people want to leave.
Thank you for your public comments.
Hey, pardon. Thanks, Dave. Have a good night. Thanks.
Because you're skinny, that's why. I'd be happy to give you some consolation.
What's that? Oh, really? I was supposed to say, but you told me was that, I don't think that was just true. Well, I'll tell them later, but I have to, I told them the issue was that.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Hi, how are you? How are you? Nate, is this Nate Davis?
No.
Here goes. Oh, so they named him Melon.
No, I'm so happy for him.
Okay, okay.
So happy, it's beautiful to see him.
Yeah. He's, he's been amazing, person ever.
I've seen him get a...
Just been a juvenile patient. He really is. So I'm happy for him.
Good.
Oh, it's really...
Yeah.
Oh, sure. No, but, yeah, I think so, we, I mean, I don't know if you're on the agenda, but I think the second one's, we're trying to have a higher level of community person, but higher level of, you know, I would have a percent of, I would give it to the senior that was there, okay? But I heard it was a good number of houses, good, Joseph Oliver.
Thanks, I was trying to read the text.
Oh, Teresa.
I thought you'd let me know, thank you. Yeah, it was nice seeing you.
Thank you, you too.
Yeah, come back in the second, I was in, but I think it's 24. Yeah. And Blanca, nice to meet you, sorry. Now, nice to meet you, nice to meet you, Alex, nice to put a name to the name. I, that is important.
Adjusting on that for, you ever said that, about a half an hour ago?
I know, when we got here, we got here and we were like, how long do you think it will, like, eight thirty, and then he was like, oh, the room is full of company. Yeah, yeah. And I think, yeah, I didn't realize that.
It was an hour, I sent it.
An hour, just one hour. Well, I was thinking when we were doing, I was like, okay, I know it's on the agenda for how long, so definitely, I am super.
We gotta do this.
Yeah, the timer, I'm.
Four minutes, ding.
Yes.
Three minutes, ding.
That was my, I, I wouldn't do three minutes, I would.
Three minutes.
Sometimes I try to get the message across.
That's exactly what I mean.
After a while, it was kind of like, you know, it was.
Take the focus.
Two minutes, I said three minutes.
I, I.
Well, it's kind of like when you're tweeting. It's kind of like writing a tweet, like you have to be able to get the best message across, whether it's your name, your character. Yeah. Um, just. See, that's why I said.
I just.
Two.
Sorry, I didn't get the ripples or something.
The day, the day you get red, it will be like eight o'clock, because we've had meetings ended at eight before.
Remember the first, like pandemic one, it was like crazy quick.
Ugh, yes.
Maybe it was the second pandemic one, I don't know, it was one of the pandemic.
One of the pandemic meetings.
Yeah.
Okay. Barb, you ready to go? Okay. That's okay. All right, so we'll continue with our agenda, the next item are, is the consent items, this includes the minutes of July first meeting, the personnel agenda, financials. Um, letter, just letter A. Can I have a motion to approve the consent items? Barb, second, Nate, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes seven zero.
Dr. Rivera, before you go on, I just want to acknowledge our new assistant principal at Gilderlin High School, Mr. Steve Wolfe, who we just appointed, congratulations Steve.
Congratulations. Okay, next we have information items, first superintendent information, Dr. Wiles?
Um, my first item is just a brief update on our work toward our pre-K partnerships. I get many emails and phone calls wanting to know where the district is in our efforts to implement partnerships around our pre-K funding that we received in this last budget. So we have issued an RFP, it was returned, we currently have two community partners who we are currently making plans with to enter into contract with. So that we can offer applications to families to participate in pre-K this fall. Uh, the exact start date of implementation is still not pinned down, but we're getting closer every day. And, um, we will just continue to work toward getting our contracts together for our next board meeting and hopefully get this process going. So everyone, thank you for your patience and stay tuned.
I know a lot of people are excited about that, so thanks for the update, Marie.
Sure thing. And then I get the next things.
Okay.
My second item is, I promise, a brief update on our proposed plan for the use of our federal funds. I just want to lay out where our current thinking is, and I use the word proposed here because we have quite a bit of, of, of money and resources available to us. And we need to submit a plan largely before we have our students back in school to see what our real actual needs are. So, um, let me give you a highlight of what we have so far. So there are two big categories of federal funds, there's the Corona virus response and relief supplemental appropriations act, fondly known as CRISA. And then there's the American Rescue Plan, which is ARP. The federal government approved the the CRISA funds back in December twenty twenty. And the American Rescue Plan was approved by the federal government back in March of twenty twenty-one. Uh, you can see our grant allocation for the CRISA money is four million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. I'm going to keep going down that side of the chart. Uh, the application was submitted last week, um, on July fifteenth, I have to thank Damian Singleton, who, uh, did the hard work of putting that together to post it to the state ed portal. With all of the forms and narratives that had to go along with it. And those funds are available to us, um, by September twenty twenty-three. So we have some time to understand exactly what our needs are, if should we need to make some adjustments. And then back over on the right-hand side of the column, uh, under the American Rescue Plan, our grant allocation there is two point eight million dollars. Uh, the application for that funding is actually due at the end of next month. I understand that there is a extension possible, we might consider asking for that extension, um, but it will be due very soon. And those funds need to be used by September of twenty twenty-four. And then just complicating this a little bit more, uh, we also received six hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars in something called Governor's Education Emergency Relief, this is state money. Um, and that application was submitted with our CRISA application, um, the state blended those two things together, uh, for us, so we have all of that information in. So, uh, just to re- um, review of the allowable uses of federal funds, they fall under these, um, seven categories that are pretty broad. One of the important things to keep in mind is that this is one-time funding, so we're trying to direct it toward non-recurring costs, things that we need temporarily. Or for things that we can purchase and then they are permanently ours. So top priority is safely returning students to in-person instruction, maximizing in-person instruction. Um, operating school and meeting the needs of students is a very, very broad category. Addressing the impacts of COVID nineteen on our students, and here we're thinking about, um, interrupted instruction, uh, learning loss, a phrase that I don't care for much, but that's what's in the federal, uh, language. And then the impacts on our, our low-income students, our students with disabilities, our, our English language learners and students who may be experiencing homelessness. That too is a big category, there's an expectation that we spend twenty percent of our resources in that area. Um, and then we're also looking to implement strategies to meet students' social, emotional, mental health and academic needs. Um, offering summer after-school and other extended learning and enrichment programs and then supporting early childhood education. So those are the big categories. What I've done next is I've divided this up in the categories that we need to report our, our purchases in. Well, before I get there, let me talk about our guiding principles. So when we thought about how are we going to use these resources, we kept at our, top of our mind, what are our priorities to meet the needs of all students? This shouldn't be something separate and apart from what we generally want to accomplish with our students. So that drove our work. The next one is the tricky part, we're anticipating the needs of our student and staff after the last eighteen months. We suspect there will be academic challenges, social, emotional challenges. But we don't know exactly what they will be or how pervasive they will be, but we prioritize that with that expectation. And then we did listen to the feedback from our community stakeholders through our thought exchange, um, as was pointed out earlier. Many use the thought exchange to tell us about everything on their mind, so we had to parse through a bit to get to those areas that were targeted toward the federal funds. Re, uh, non-recurring expenses. And so you can see the stats of the people who participated and the, the priorities that came from that thought exchange. So we've talked a lot about these earlier today, so I won't restate them. So let me just show you the breakdown of these two pots of money, I started with the, the gear money. And we, we have planned preliminarily to put that into three different buckets, one around professional sal- salaries. We're looking at the social, emotional side of our student needs by thinking about additional counselors, perhaps a behavioral specialist to support us in our, in our classrooms. Um, but there's also a ton of summer curriculum work that's actually happening now and will happen in subsequent summers as well. Um, we are looking at a certain amount for purchase services, and this would be to contract with outside providers, again, around the social, emotional side of our, of our efforts, social work, psychologists, art and music ther- uh, therapy. Um, and then lastly, we have a certain amount set aside for, um, materials and supplies, internet hotspots are very important. Um, and then screening tools, again, for social, emotional learning, because we want, what are the student needs that we have specifically? So that's a relatively small amount of, of resources we have to do, have to spend in those areas. The bigger pot of money is our CRISA funding. And the biggest, um, allocation is in professional salaries, and I just listed the types of, um, positions that we would be considering for these, knowing that they are non-recurring. So class size reduction, FTEs is included, remote teaching is included here. Um, I, I'll do a sidebar here to mention that we are planning to participate in the regional, um, remote instruction that is being coordinated through Capital Region BOSI. I'll be sending a letter to families tomorrow around those tentative plans, but we need to provide FTEs to BOSI's in order to staff that program. They are not included in our regular budget, but they are included here. Um, we've also included, um, additional FTEs for academic interventions, uh, academic intervention services, special education, before and after school programming, uh, attendance support. We're looking at community liaison to help us get our students who have not been in school back in. And then this year, we had a floating nurse, um, that we, um, thought worked beautifully, our nurses loved having an additional person available to help, especially this year, so we felt. We also have eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of funding for teaching assistance in all kinds of varieties, um, elementary, E and L, special education. Again, thinking about the additional supports that students will need as they return to school this year. Purchased services, we're looking at internet redundancy, additional backup, uh, professional development also falls in this category. Uh, we're also looking to expand our communications, um, support. There are high expectations for us to communicate frequently and often, and we could use some help there, we're working very hard to do that well. Materials and supplies, you can see, this is instructional support, reading materials, math resources, manipulatives. Um, support materials for parents who may be struggling with helping their students get back to school. Under equipment, we have our outdoor wireless access for, for our pavilions or potential pavilion, pavilions. Uh, we are going to be replacing Chromebooks, our interactive panels, technology infrastructure upgrades, and then to help our, um, lunch program, some additional refrigeration. Because we're serving so many lunches with free lunch for all, we are actually running out of freezer space. And then last but not least, we've already referred to this, under the category of minor remodeling, we have, uh, these two bu- these two buckets of monies to improve the HVAC in the proposed capital project. And also repairs and upgrades to our indoor and outdoor learning spaces. So I know I was fast, but it's also late evening. So the other thing I have to say about this is this is a plan, it is subject to change, we may need to fine-tune as we get our school year underway and see what our actual needs are. Um, I just want to say a little bit about our American Rescue Funds, this plan is still in development. We do need to spend at least twenty percent of it to, um, support non-recurring costs to address learning loss. Uh, but there are other three big areas that we would like to consider. One is our indoor and outdoor learning spaces, um, technology is a continued interest. Um, I think Rebecca asked the question about how many classrooms we can have the, um, uh, Prometheus boards in, love to do more of that if possible. And then we do want to continue to support student learning and social, um, social, emotional learning, because that we think is going to be a huge priority. So that was a skating tour of several million dollars. Of course.
I mean, how concerned are we about being able to access these services? Because I'm going to assume that every other district in our area is going to be looking for the exact same services, there's only a finite amount of that in the area.
In terms of people? I think it is going to be a challenge, because everyone has these resources, everyone has, I'm going to assume, similar needs. You know, hiring just in the regular cycle is a bit of a challenge right now, so that will definitely be something to work through. While Nate's thinking, Blanca had her hand up.
Back to the, um, BOSI's program for remote learning, is there going to be a maximum? And I'm trying to figure out if there's going to be a big difference between what was available last year when we did it ourselves versus now that we're going to ask BOSI's to help us.
There will be a difference. We, we don't have the capacity, even if we took every one of these federal dollars to replicate a K twelve program just in Gilderlin like we did last year. So, um, there is a sliding scale that BOSI's will use, that based on the number of students who are going to be remote, they'll ask us to, um, um, commit X number of teachers. I think one teacher for every twenty-four students. But those twenty-four students won't all be in third grade, they're going to be spread out all over the place. So, um, participants in this approach will be, students will be in classes with children from multiple school districts. And they may, or may not have a teacher who is from Gilderlin, so it's going to be a real regional approach.
So I bring that up because of my concerns, obviously, I've, I've been bringing up, I think, remote learning the entire pandemic, that we need to keep it as an option. Um, but I think things are changing a little right now, and, um, that letter we received from the Wentz speaks to those concerns with the Delta variant and then possibly the Lambda variant after that. So I just wonder, I'm concerned about us being in a situation where we have more people that want to do remote learning than we have actual spots. And then if we're involving BOSI's, don't we have like less control over that?
Um, the number of spots is not really limited.
Okay.
Because the more students you send, the more teachers you send, and there's probably, there could be a tipping point on that. When you get to a certain number of students, well, then maybe we could. But the high school level becomes very tricky, because if you think about it, we offer hundreds of, of courses. So tapping into the regional capacity to do all of the things that are possible, high school level is going to be essential. But to think that we would have, well, and I don't know, maybe we will, a full section of any given grade, K six. And then given numbers of students at seven, eight in those quarters. of any given grade, K-6, and then given numbers of students at 7, 8 in those core areas, I think it's a long shot to think that we could do that. The other thing that will not be an option is this hybrid model that we did, where we had some students in the classroom and some students at home. That will not be part of the equation.
As a parent, I felt like that didn't work very well. I don't blame the district, you know, had to piece everything together. Thank you for answering my question. One more thing about the teaching, for the folks who are going to be teaching in person and the students that are going to be in person, are we going to require them to commit to half semester or half year like last year? Do we not know yet? And are they, are we going to go in with the caveat that if things go awry with, you know, coronavirus, that we'll have to switch to remote again? Like, are you married, are you stuck with being in person, and you won't be able to switch to remote later?
We are flexible as can be. However, the BOSI's program is going to ask for a year-long commitment. The switch mid-year, today we had our leadership team in this room, and one of the things we're doing as part of our retreat is we're all bringing in an artifact of something that we just don't ever want to see again in 2020, 2020, 2021. And I think, I don't think you'll mind if I tell this story, but Bill Obi came in with his stack of papers for refiguring out students who came and went all year long, particularly at that February piece. Now, tomorrow, we're going to burn those. Under supervision, Cliff is taking care of us.
I feel for Mr. Obi, and if he's watching, he still owes me a dollar because he said he would never close the schools last March of 20. But I'm concerned that we're not going to give folks an option because along the way during the school year, kids will maybe have that opportunity to get vaccinated, and so it won't be as much of a concern. So I'm actually opposed to making people stick to the whole year.
That's actually not my rule.
Who do I have to petition?
Oh, well, I think it's the BOSI's trying to coordinate all of this. It's really, really hard to plan this to begin with because they want to know, well, how many kids are you sending? I'm like, well, I don't know how many kids I'm sending. Because I don't think parents can make a choice until they know what in-school looks like. I can't tell you what in-school looks like until we get guidance from the Department of Health, although we got a glimmer from CDC earlier today. So I had written a letter to families, I probably have to rewrite tomorrow, it's going to go out tomorrow, to say, I know you're thinking about what school is going to look like, but we need to know about social distancing, masking, using cafeteria spaces, using transportation, how many kids can I put on both. Without those four questions, we're in a tough spot.
Understood. I feel like it would be bad for the student to take away the option and make them have to stick with a full year of remote when we know that it's not as good as the in-person one.
Go ahead, Gloria.
Just curiosity, with the CRISA funding, for example, in the one slide, you had minor remodeling, and it had improvements to HVAC, and then the repairs. Is that amount figured in when you were doing the projections for the cost of the bond, the capital?
The slide that Neil did today was...
Yes. This is included?
Is included.
Okay.
Updated from July 1.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Wiles, I saw that, like, I think one of the elementary schools had something where students who were remote, who were coming back, they were doing, I don't know if they were volunteering or what they're, how it was coordinated, but something for those students, I guess, to be, have some social activities before they come back to school. So I didn't know if, because with some of these one-time funds, not just the all-remote students, but all of the students, because some of them had, like, really bare bones school year last year, if they could do things like field trips or other things where, you know, they're together, not at a desk in front of a computer kind of thing.
So I just called the summer programming on this slide. We have built funding in for that. All of the buildings are planning some late August events for our fully remote students to come in and resocialize, have fun, revisit the building. So the buildings themselves are sending out those invitations, and it's being funded through this program.
Going back to my original question, is it, is it possible for us to contract now for those services in anticipation that we are going to need them? I mean, I'm assuming we have contracts in place for outside services already. We're probably going to need more.
Well, I think we want approval on the plan first. But then, you know, I think we're going to start trying to do some hiring for positions that we know that we need. So we could, whether or not we could do the full amount, because we won't exactly now. But that's a great point.
Yeah, I'm with Nate. It makes me nervous. Yeah, we're all going to be looking for the same folks at the same time.
Reagan knows all about that. Barbara?
When we're talking about enhancing, you know, the kids' learning, could we tap into our own teaching staff and offer them, you know, an extra number of dollars so that maybe they could stay after school or do some tutoring? Or at the middle school, you know, we talked about having a before-school program that the kids could come in?
Yep. It's in there, right there.
So that's in there already?
Yes. So it's not necessarily new people, but actually tapping into our current staff to work beyond the regular school day.
Right. And the other question I had, it looks as though, if I'm reading your slides correctly, the outdoor pavilions, for the most part, can be paid for by these funds?
It's my understanding that they could be paid for entirely by these funds.
So they wouldn't have to be in our bond project, then?
They would need to be part of the capital project to go through the approval piece, but we wouldn't have to borrow money to pay for that.
That was such an awesome idea, whatever teacher came up with that.
I love it. I just think it's...
I love it, too. I hope that they make it clear that it's, the funds are coming from, you know, the federal government to cover that. Like you said, Barb, that seems like it's almost completely checks the boxes.
Yeah, that's awesome. One teeny tiny thing about that, I noticed in the pictures, they're like in the middle of grass, so I'm just assuming we'll have, we'll make it accessible and have some sort of path to it.
Those were just a rendering. It's not the design or anything.
Okay.
Great point. We just wanted to have you have something to look at because they don't exist.
You want me to panic about something? No problem.
Again, do. Any other questions?
Rebecca, come on. Thanks for that, Dr. Wiles. You know, I just looked at the slides from earlier in July, and it looks like the annual tax impact then was $64, and now it's like 52 or something. So it shows this reduction, right?
Yes, that's part of it, yeah.
Which is great. I mean, I think, and I don't know what everyone else thinks, we should ask for more in the capital project. Like, looking at your priorities that the thought exchange talked about, air quality, HVAC, building infrastructure and technology, the technology boards that you were just talking about, only 50% of the classrooms are covered under our proposed project. AC is only about 65% plus or minus across the district. I just think it should be bigger. I think this is the time to do it.
Yeah, I mean...
I agree with Rebecca, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was going to say, I agree as well, especially if, knowing we're getting these other spaces that are one-time costs that are covered. And we all seem, also seem to have a lot of support for turf. It's one vote that includes everything.
I agree.
That's...
If it includes turf, then we should pile it on respectfully.
Well, I don't know about piling it on, but I think...
Like, the air quality, the AC, like, we should find out from Cliff how much it would cost to get us to a higher percentage, I think. That's, that's so essential, as you know, with the virus.
It's about five and a half million more for bathrooms and AC. That's just looking at those, that's rough numbers. I agree with Rebecca, I agree with Sema, Blanca. Clearly, there's a groundswell of support for the turf. Using that as our, to a strategic advantage is, is in our best interest, is in the district's best interest.
Respectfully.
Well, yeah, it's one of the, it's like, you know, buying a TV, and then you go back and you're like, I wish I bought the bigger one. You know, when we have the opportunity here, especially like you brought out, or you pointed out, Rebecca, that the difference in the cost, yeah, there is, obviously, it's going to be a bit more, but what we're looking for in terms of, like, quality for infrastructure, why would we not, out of all the times, do it now?
I mean, you, I mean, yeah, I think you have a massive resource, you know, we worry about communication and getting it out there. You have any number of booster groups that will carry that torch for us.
Yeah. And then you have the people who, you know, who are maybe a little bit skeptical about, you know, what the chunk of it is, even though, even though it does cover other things, but we can make that case better to say that it also includes X, Y, Z.
I agree.
Me, too.
Oh, go ahead, Barb.
The thing that I heard Cliff say, though, is that our current project is going to make Farnsworth almost 100% air-conditioned. The only building that it sounded like we weren't dealing with was the high school.
Right, well, I don't know what the...
We could use some of the funds, you know, for that, rather than increasing the, you know, the bond issue.
Well, it sounded like, and I don't know, he said that, that there was going to be some window units moved downstairs.
Right.
And then, I don't know what, how that changes the percentage, like, how much it changes, but then also...
It brings it almost to 100.
And then the high school was only, what, 60-something?
Yeah, and they aren't doing anything there.
Yeah, so...
Also, I don't know the longevity of wall units.
Yeah, me neither.
And aren't you not supposed to run them, like, in a storm either?
I mean, I'm sure the rooms would be better off having actual, you know, AC as opposed to a wall unit.
When we asked him that question, he said that, that price increase is phenomenal to do the in-house type of air conditioning.
Well, I mean, it might be...
I don't mean price that, though. I mean, that number would be astronomical, but the P1s and P2s, which I think is what Rebecca's referring to, that, I mean, that number is, you know, like I said, it's rough, my rough math, five and a half million. And that's bathrooms and HVAC.
Sounds familiar. What I don't want to get, what I don't want to do to the public is ask them for this big capital project and then come back next year and be like, oh, you know, there were some really important things that we didn't put in, so we're going to have to hit you up again. Like, I'd just, I'd rather do it now, one good, solid effort.
I think you have to remember that these things that were eliminated was because a bond issue was also voted down.
I voted against.
Right, but we didn't...
I'm just saying, so we have to remember now that we're going, these things were necessary, but along with the excitement of people about the turf field, and I think, you know, like, the playgrounds for the elementary school and probably the outdoor spaces, we still had a project that was voted down, and there are still people in the community who won't be as supportive as all that we are.
Right, but we did not have this public support when we had the other project go up.
And none of that stuff was in that project.
No, but...
No, but I'm just saying, but there was still...
Yeah, but the turf field was not, which was, I mean, out of everything, that's what we've, you know, heard so much about.
But we have to remember that there are other people in the community. I think it's great.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree.
I, I...
That's why I'm saying to people who are skeptical about the, you know, the turf field part, seeing that there's going to be this much more spent on infrastructure and ventilation.
But you've got a percentage, percentage of the community that are looking at the dollar amounts.
Oh, yeah.
What it's going to do to their taxes, especially, we have, you know, a lot of us who are on fixed incomes, and they're looking at that bottom line.
Right.
You know, they don't have the children that are involved in the sports and all, right? They've done that.
Yeah.
They paid for that. And now they're at a point where every dollar you add on, it's coming out of something else they would do with their money. They're not getting raises, so...
Right, so I'm, I mean, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying the people who are supportive of the turf field, they are still going to have the issues with the people who don't want to pay for that because their kids aren't in school now or whatever. So if they want that to pass, then I think they're going to have to garner more support for the whole project. And it sounds like it already got...
I mean, that, that group of people, they're going to be against whatever the project is.
I don't think so. Because they, we passed the bond issue, it just had to be less. It had to be more...
Yeah, but that bond issue was, what, 40, how many, what was that, 40? It was a big bond issue. And I'll, and I'll say this, what Cliff was describing at the last meeting about finding that sweet spot for the project, 15 to 25 million...
Balance.
I deal with construction claims every day, all day. That is incredibly smart, Cliff's part, incredibly smart, because that is exactly where you want to be. 15 to 25 million, you're not going to have construction claims, not going to have a lot of change orders. That's, I mean, and that's, even with this added money, you're still in that sweet spot, I think.
I also think we are a little, you know, we've learned from when it didn't pass the first time, myself included, and we have clear goals with the Communications Committee. I voted no, and then as I learned more about it after the fact, I would have voted yes. And so it's really, really important to get the explanation out there.
I just think we need to keep it...
Agreed.
...in mind.
I mean, since we don't have, like, the numbers in front of us, is that something we could have, Dr. Wiles, before the 10th?
Well, you would need to.
Yes.
So I think what we'll do is we'll look at our federal funding, and it, it won't cover everything that is being talked about right now because a certain portion of it has to be directed toward learning loss and interrupted instruction. But we'll see how far it can go and what impact it would have on the bottom line, you know, and then see what the impact is for bond resolutions and how much of the HVAC we need and can get and so on.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Rebecca, thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Move on to the next part of the agenda is board president information. We have a set of policies here. They're about public participation at board meetings and student assessment, including the grading systems. There's an exhibit. Does anybody in policy want to talk about them? I just wanted to make one comment about the change with the four minutes and having the timer. He's totally support that and would love to approve this next meeting and get that in place.
Are we going to appoint a timekeeper?
I was just going to say, I think, you know, in our meeting, we captured all the questions that were asked.
Okay.
Even tonight, you know, we went way beyond that 30-minute time limit, but we could have, you know, made a motion to extend the time in relationship to the quantity of people that were here. But we should follow protocol, you know, and, and get some kind of a timer. I mean, somebody mentioned that you can...
Yeah, you can do a free timer online.
Yeah, exactly. And, and just stick to it. Everybody doesn't feel insulted that, oh, well, you let that one go, but you won't let me go, you know? And just be consistent. So, as I said, I think we captured all the critiques of the, of the policy.
I'm wondering if it might, I don't know if it would make any difference, would it be an idea to have in-person comments done in session one before the meeting begins? And then any sent-in comments read at the end of session two?
And it may be that after the turf field issue and the bond vote, we may not have the numbers of people.
Well, it'll always cycle, there'll be something else.
There'll always be something.
But we didn't, we didn't used to either, you know?
Well, I don't know about that. There, there have been...
We, we didn't have meetings that had an hour of public comment.
Oh...
I don't know, I remember, like, the, I don't want to say cobblestone, but...
Okay, I don't, I don't remember.
There was cobblestone, I remember.
When we were cutting for our language program that one year, oh, yeah.
Okay. But I didn't know if it was a good idea, have people that are here speak, and then they can leave if they wish, and then, if they've come, and then have any read, comments read at the end.
I mean, I don't mind do, you can, I don't, I don't, my preference is it doesn't matter. I just let the people in person speak first, and then I just read the comments that were sent in. I don't know, I personally think it's strange to have it at the end instead of just doing all the public comments together.
Well, we have to poll the comments.
No, I know we do, but it's, it's just, I just personally think it's strange.
My preference would be that we just have only in-person. I would like to go back to our original way.
I thought we had talked about that.
And just go in-person, and then, if people want to send, we, we take the comments by email, but they don't have to be read in public, they're meant for us. The Board of Education reads them.
Right, I just think, right, right, like, if they write public comment and we read it, I, I think if I was a viewer at home and I wanted to listen to public comment, I just want to go to that one section and hear all the public comments. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
But my, my point is, I think we should just have public comment in-person.
I mean, I think one of the issues is...
And now, people want to write to us, they can write to us, but that doesn't have to be read.
Oh, you mean, like, so no public comment that's written?
That's read.
I, I personally think that it's...
That's my feeling. We've always done it that way, it's worked for years.
Right, but I, I just personally think it's an accessibility issue.
Yeah.
Because it's annoying to come out here, or it's sometimes difficult or impossible, or like...
But they sent, they can send to us their point of view, we're reading it.
But they sent, they can send to us their point of view, we're reading it, I mean, we all get it.
Right, but it's not being read out loud to the public.
Well, then, we're not a forum for communicating to the public, they're supposed to be communicating to us.
Honestly, we don't even discuss them sometimes, unless there's public comment.
But we don't discuss public comment, that's part of the.
No, but what she's saying is sometimes people email us, we read it, and then we move on, and it's never discussed in public.
Well, that's up to us, whether it, no, why should it be, unless we think it's something that we should discuss.
I just personally think.
We don't discuss it just because it's read in public, that's.
Right, I just personally think it's an accessibility issue.
Me too.
Not everybody can get here to a meeting. I understand, like, it takes longer, but now we're putting, you know, a time limit on it, so we can decide, you know, if we want them read later or not. I don't know, that's.
And that's how we tried to encapsulate that.
Yeah.
And we did, I mean, we say live speaker, we're given the first opportunity to speak. With the understanding that if we get to 30 minutes and we're, you know, we have time, then we can read, but all the comments will go into public, go into the public record.
Right.
You know, so, we're trying to get, but I agree, I think, and I think, and I wanna speak for Kelly, she's not here, but that's what she brought up the last meeting, is you wanna give everybody the opportunity. Some people, they can't get here, they got an illness, they got a kid, they got whatever, you know, and maybe they just don't feel comfortable public speaking, I mean, that happens. So, you know, I think we gotta give everybody the chance, and we can read it. If we don't, we have time, why don't, if all we get is written comments, we get the public comment period, why don't we read them? We're just gonna skip over it?
I mean, I just personally think it's closing off a lot of people and to say that they have to come in person. I know we'd rather them come in person, but I, you know.
I prefer them come in person, too.
Right.
I never had the feeling that we were cutting people off with the policy we had in place, which was, we never read, we always had people come.
Right, I know that, but then the pandemic happened.
And people did write us, but we never read it out, we just read it ourselves and.
Right, but I'm just saying, everything before the pandemic was done a certain way, and then we realized, because people could write in, that.
Well, they could.
No, they could write in the public comment, that they were writing in more. I just think anytime we're gonna engage the public more is better.
I understand, I just, I'm concerned about our, our business, too, that we have to do, so.
Right, but we can cut the time off.
I would go for three minutes rather than four.
I'm okay with that, too.
And if we have the time, we use it. I mean, we're leaving, you know.
I think three minutes is good, too.
Today was so beautiful, so many people here.
I, I thought it was great.
I don't think we had a preference in the policy meeting, three or four, I think we just went with four, but, I mean, maybe, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but I'm fine with the change to three.
I'd like to get this passed tonight, so you amend it, but amend it to, to a three-minute timeline.
Yeah, can we do that and then, you know, suspend the rules and then vote?
The other thing that Gloria mentioned, is, you know, if we have it for the 30 minutes of in, you know, in-person type stuff, and they use up that time, then my belief is that we should have a sentence in there saying that, you know, your letters will be a matter of public record and attached to the minutes, but they won't be read verbally. So there'll, it'll still be a public comment that will be attached to our record and will be posted on our website, but if, you know, if our personal people here have exceeded the 30 minutes, you know, and we haven't extended the time, then, I mean, that might be a happy meeting place.
I think that's what we put in there, right?
I think that's in there.
Comments submitted in writing shall be read by the president as time allows.
Okay, that's fine.
And all comments will be included in the meeting.
That's fine.
Motion accepted?
No.
Except to, yeah, let's amend it to three minutes, if we can make that.
So the board president could decide to read all of them.
Yeah, because I just personally think if there's something where, there's a topic where people are writing in passionately about something, you know, and, I don't know, there's different things that come up, I don't wanna just silence people because they weren't able to make it in person. It's kinda like the.
I don't think we're silencing them, because we are reading, I mean, we personally get them, there are letters.
Well, they're not.
We're not silencing, but they're not, we're not allowing the public to hear.
Right, but I, so, for example, the PTA meetings this past year got way more participation because they were able to make it online and accessible like that, and everybody said that's a good thing.
Yeah, that was.
So I just, right, so I just think anytime where we can have more engagement from the community, it's a good thing. And then we're asking them to vote for these things, so, you know, I just think, I get it, like, I don't wanna be here all night till 11 o'clock either.
Oh, we'll find a happy meeting, we will.
Yeah. So have a motion then to change it to amend it to three minutes?
Yes.
Blanca? Second Nate? All in favor? Pass a 7-0, so we can change that to three minutes. And did you wanna vote on it tonight, then?
She would love that.
I don't remember who else is on policy.
Ben.
Oh, Ben, I'm assuming that he was okay with that, then, too, with whatever changes? Okay. So can we vote on this now, or do we have to wait till action?
Uh, no, you could vote on it.
We can vote on them together.
Oh, and then the student assessment ones as well? Does anybody have any comments or questions about that?
Nate had an awesome ad that I just wanted to call your attention to, it's in green, 4710R. Remember the whole democratic society sentence? He added, "Who can participate fully in a multicultural, multiracial democratic society?" So that multicultural and multiracial, I thought that was a very nice ad.
Yeah, I think we need to take the comma after multiracial.
You can see that?
I think it's, yeah.
Yep.
That might just be a, I just, I wanna, I know we're looking at this, but I wanna step back, we wanna make that three-minute change, not, we get, we should probably approve it because it's on the form as well as four minutes, at four minutes, so we need to change that to three minutes as well.
So the, so A and B need to change to three minutes?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we can vote, and I can say with the amended A and B changed to three minutes. Does anyone else have comments about C, D, or E?
Is this the one on the assessment?
Yeah, grading, assessment, and grading regulation.
If somebody from the policy could explain that, I'm really having problems with including that word written in paragraph three, line six. Must be a written.
We changed that, right? I thought we changed that.
Oh, I read, jeez, I thought it was still there, I read, I read it.
Is this the written feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we changed it.
Did?
I think we did, because I remember arguing about it.
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering why it was still, but I didn't get.
Where is it, on letter C?
I didn't write the letter, I just put paragraph three, line six.
On the regulation, Gloria, or the policy?
I think it's on the policy.
Policy?
I just wrote down the line, paragraph three, line six. Now I gotta find it.
Oh, written, on letter C, second paragraph?
Yes. Or written, written feedback?
And it's the, I don't know, line, but written's crossed out.
I have line six, line six, paragraph three.
Yeah, written is crossed out.
Okay, I, I don't know why, I thought it was.
Oh, wait, no, it's written there, but written and/or oral feedback.
I think it's and/or.
Oh, and/or, okay.
Yeah, it's listed with a whole bunch of stuff.
That's fine, I missed the and/or then.
I think before it was just written feedback.
It was, yeah. Or it was just the written, right?
Yeah.
It was just the written, but it's and/or, but then we changed it.
And I know what you're looking at, but okay.
I'm fine.
If you're fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Any other?
It should be written or.
Yeah, it's there. Any other comments or questions on C, D, or E? All right, so can I have a motion to, we're gonna vote on letters A, B, C, D, E, and A and B need to be changed to the amended three minutes for a public comment. Gloria? Second? Judy? All in favor? Pass a 7-0.
And we're gonna let the public know before the next meeting, or at the beginning of?
Yeah, next meeting, I'll say at the beginning of public comment that we're going to follow the three-minute rule, and we can put a timer up on the screen, and if for some reason we can't get on the screen, the VP can have a timer on their phone, or I can set it on my phone.
We probably should put something on the website, too.
I'm making a note to Patrice, too.
And what, the other thing we talked about is that we get written comments, and I don't know where Marie went with this, is that when we get email copy, email comments to us, we are going to respond, but the plan was to respond with something so that people get those, they understand what our policy is.
Oh, yeah.
Remember, we had that discussion?
Yes.
Oh, you mean for public comment?
For public comment, so that people understand that if they're sending an eight-page written comment, you're only gonna, and we actually read them, you're only gonna get three minutes.
Are you volunteering to respond to all of it?
No, no.
I have no problem responding to them at all.
No, I think the idea is, so, like, when Linda receives a written public comment in writing, that we would send them a copy of policy we just amended that says.
They know, they're aware.
It's three minutes.
Which includes reading of the.
Yeah, no, I just, if that's okay with Linda.
Just so they get some response.
I have been, when they, like, at this instance, when I was getting them, I would write back and say, okay, you've been added, and as a reminder, you have.
Okay. Thank you, yes, it's.
We've experienced is that people will write this long letter and a big introduction in the heart of their debate or whatever.
That's why they need to know. Well, that, they have to get their editorial, they have to edit.
No, the first three minutes are condensed what they want to talk about.
They need to edit.
Exactly.
Maybe there can be a suggestion of, like, thinking about it as a tweet, 280 characters, just get the content, the heart of your message in there.
But only all caps?
Yeah, no.
Some of us, some of us who don't tweet might not be good.
Well, I'm just saying, after several minutes, the message is kinda lost.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I am good with that. So is that good, then, for policy? Okay, so we'll move on to action items. First, we'll have school business, Neil?
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. First item this evening is a resolution to approve the agreement with Oswego State University to make available college and high school courses to students for college credit during the 2021-2022 school year.
Can I have a motion to approve the MOU with SUNY Oswego? Barb, second Judy? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass a 7-0.
Next is a resolution to approve the agreement with St. Bonaventure University to accept students for internship and practicum experience.
Can I have a motion to approve the agreement with St. Bonaventure? Blanca, second Nate? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass a 7-0.
Next, a resolution to approve the agreements with Charlton School and Sign Language Interpreter Services.
Can I have a motion to approve these service agreements? Gloria, second. Rebecca, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Next is a resolution to approve the following school lunch bid awards, and they have their categories are beverages, fresh pizza, groceries, and ice cream.
Can I have a motion to approve these bid awards? Judy, second. Barb? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass a 7-0.
Next is a resolution to approve the two-year optional extension of the bid award with WB Mason Company to provide toilet tissue under the same terms and conditions.
Can I have a motion to approve the toilet tissue award? Gloria, second. Nate, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass a 7-0.
Next is a resolution to approve the two-year optional extension of the bid award with All-Star Cleaning Supply to provide paper towels under the same terms and conditions.
Can I have a motion to approve the paper towel award, bid award? Gloria, second. Nate, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Next is a resolution to approve the final 2021, 2020-21 BOSI service contracts and the preliminary 2021-22 BOSI service contracts.
Can I have a motion to approve the service contracts with BOSIs? Rebecca, second. Judy? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass a 7-0.
I think the heading of that, I don't know, doesn't match the.
Resolution is correct, the heading's off here.
Right, okay.
Oh, the heading on the contract?
Yeah, on G.
Okay, and then finally, on this evening, we have a donation. It's a monetary donation for the purchase of landscape materials for the Linwood Elementary Courtyard Project, and it's from the Linwood.
Can I have a motion to approve the donation? Judy, second. Rebecca? Any questions or comments? Just thank you, Linwood PTA.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass a 7-0. Thank you, Neil. Next, we'll go to Superintendent Action, Dr. Wiles.
Thank you so much. I have two items tonight. The first is a resolution to ratify the contract between the Gilderland Central School District and the Gilderland Principal Association for the term of July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2025.
Can I have a motion to approve the contract ratification? Nate, second. Blanca? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Pass a 7-0.
Thank you, and the second item I have this evening is a request to approve our annual plans, our building-level emergency response plans, which were reviewed in executive session on July 1st.
Can I have a motion to approve these annual plans? Gloria, second. Rebecca? Any questions, comments? All in favor? Pass a 7-0. Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, we have Board Committee reports. Start with audit. Actually, I think, I don't know if it's Ben or Kelly is in audit, but we didn't meet yet, I'm not on audit, so assuming we'll meet soon. Policy?
Worked on policy, you're just.
Okay, thank you. And then, business practices?
Yeah.
Okay. And communications?
We will be setting up a meeting.
Okay, great. And then Equity and Diversity Committee, I think, oh, we didn't meet, but we will meet, I think, next month?
Uh, we meet in September.
Oh, in September, okay. Thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next is public comment number two. Does anybody write in, Linda? No, thank you. And then Board Issues, Ideas, and Sharing? Gloria?
We talked about, a little bit about having a Google meeting.
Yeah, so actually, I was gonna bring that up. August 24th was in the, the Friday update, and so, I don't know if everybody saw that, but I think it would be good, if possible, to set the date up sooner than later, because it's for goals, but also to potentially appoint the DEI coordinator, if they're hired by then. Does that work? Does that date work for everybody, or?
What was the date?
It's a Tuesday.
Sorry, Tuesday, August 24th.
I nodded without knowing the date, I was like, yes.
During the day, right?
You're gonna be far, far away?
Maybe late in the evening?
Uh, yeah, same, probably like 7 o'clock, assuming.
We have a DEI subcommittee, but I guess that can be changed. Our subcommittee, you mean?
Oh, at 7?
Yeah, well, at, no, 6:30.
Oh, okay.
Maybe they can meet at 6:00 and.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll email Joe.
Wait, am I on your subcommittee? Oh, yes, so let's change that. Sorry, Reagan's looking at me, too. Yeah, let's change that, then.
I'll, I'll, I'll email Ann.
Okay, since there's three of us, it would impact.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Barb, you said you're gonna be far away. Are you okay with that, or do you wanna call, like, I don't know, can you call in, or?
I don't, I don't know where I'll be, or.
Oh.
That makes me nervous, Barb. What, that makes me nervous?
That sounds exciting. Are you okay, then, with us meeting, or with us meeting, or?
Whatever. It can be gone from August 7 through September 1.
Oh, wow, okay. I mean, because it would be probably ideal, right, to meet before the school year for that position?
To a point, yes, would be great.
Okay, well, yeah. Does everybody else, does that date work? Okay, so then we'll schedule that, then, for the goals meeting, and then the potential appointment for the new position.
Potential others, I think we may have some other last-minute hiring that will.
Oh, that sounds important, then, too.
Happen before the school year starts.
Sounds good. All right, so we'll meet on August 24th. I'll send out the, that document for the goals. Probably Nate didn't see that before either, that, so we can update and see where we are, and maybe, you know, refresh or update anything we need to for the next part of the school year. And if you have any questions or comments, you can just add that to it, or just email us, and we can add, you know, make an amendment to the agenda. Any other Board Issues, Ideas, or Sharing?
You have to do your evaluation.
Okay, so then, can I have a motion to adjourn? Barb? Second? Nate? All in favor? Pass a 7-0. Thank you, everybody.